Yes.
I'm asking you. I go pretend you're an artist.
I just work here, I don't. This is interesting. Okay.
You gotta be careful though, because I'm really good at putting the word "not" in front of it.
That's what I got.
I've got a ton of this stuff here.
Morning David.
Morning.
Look at there, look at there, somebody brought me a pint of stuff.
Gave you snacks, keep you going. I believe Scott Starter made them. We don't know, we just find things on our table, literally, and we go in there, we eat them, and then we go, who brought those? And, and I said, somebody could kill us with these, you never know it.
We're gonna spread out a little bit.
I just, I, I moved his chair so that you could.
Oh, you're just awesome. I need all the room I can get. I can, I can move away from David, he keeps flicking over my shoulder.
Can't help it, I'm just taller than you.
I, that, well, thank you, that's a good one. I'm gonna raise my chair, just because of that.
No, I checked it.
Make sure I have the right chair.
Don't worry, I checked it. When they have a four, or something, they moved the chair out of the way, I don't know what the prosecutor said.
Had his pencil.
Yeah.
Hello Scott.
She's short.
I didn't say sorry.
It's okay, I don't know where it's at now.
Well, did you watch it, or what? Was it live streaming?
He was there, he was up in the choir lot, watching.
Oh, you were there?
He was wearing a baseball cap and everything.
You were there?
Yeah.
Oh, you think, uh, Wednesday night?
Mm-hmm.
How was that home drop job?
You didn't get to see it?
Uh, no, I, I had my review on Wednesday, so.
I thought it went well.
I, uh, I, I think it went well too. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I read the news.
People don't understand if they assume answers. Compare them to houses, guys. Come on, same hundred acres, what do you want? What do you want?
Well, houses use a lot less water than lawns.
Right, right, but.
My family of four uses two thousand a month.
I agree, I agree with you, but, but it's all inclusive when people want these, whatever, or, or homeowners associations come on and then mandate, thou shall water.
You may remember that that was something I tried for a development agreement policy, was to forbid irrigation.
They law just passed, the fact is, in a, in a, an HOA can't, can't, can't require it.
No, we are online.
Well, we are, well, we're not, this meeting is not to order until such time as, you know, the council.
I asked the starter to make sure it works.
Okay.
Is why, and that's why I tell people.
Yes ma'am, thank you very much. We, uh. We will wait. We had a, Deborah, what we had is, the other night, we had the, the forum.
I saw that, I wondered how it worked.
It, it, it.
Did they, did they reach out to you?
Yes.
No, I saw something on, it's funny.
No, afterwards?
Yeah, so, so they didn't realize it was being recorded.
I'm sorry.
No.
The host, I think it's just, the, the audio guys just assumed it was being recorded.
Oh, they recorded it?
So they recorded it.
Did they put it out?
I don't, they came to me, because I was like, I suppose, and asked if, if they, to just release it, and I, I recommend that if they mentioned everyone and asked permission before.
Yeah, number.
I mean, there's a recorder there, so.
I, nobody said anything to, to me.
I, I don't, I don't think they posted it, but I just.
I don't have some objection per se to it, because if, if what I said, I can't say, public here, I should be said.
You should, definitely shouldn't have said it.
Well, if it's a public meeting, it's, it's pretty much a public meeting.
Yeah?
I said, if it's a public meeting, it's pretty much a public meeting, yes, but, but if they, did they get some answers?
I, I hope they did, I hope they did. Like, I qualify myself, you may not get the answers you wanna hear.
Black.
We get better at that, right? If you can get the answers you don't wanna hear, or if we're gonna give you one answer.
Was there a good chat?
Uh, I think so, it was pretty good.
I'd say twenty, thirty people.
They wanna try to do a couple more.
Yeah.
Well, I'll get it.
I knew the water and Gavin's image would be a big issue.
It is.
It is an awesome. I was at, uh, I did public service at breakfast with the governor. That was something, I had to deal with the president, the governmental affairs people. Okay, I'm gonna set it, it's Deb's. All right, Deborah, we'll, we'll give her a minute. I know we're all, from what I understand, we're on the, we're on the system, I just wanted to make sure before it called being. Yeah, um, wait just a moment for Deborah to come back. What are these? Oh, we'll try them, they having nuts in them? Oh, well. Okay. Are we, are we ready? Okay. Okay, yes ma'am.
I just need to get my, my, I'll ask you. It's on.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Let's call this special council meeting to order for the, uh, budget workshop number four, okay? Uh, it is, I always forget that number, eleven oh one AM, on Friday, August first, okay? We do have a quorum, because it's a special meeting, we require four members here, I do wanna make a comment that if any of you at any time need to leave the room for any reason, we will have to recess or pause the meeting because we'll lose our quorum. So, I, just let me know if you need to leave for something, and then we'll recess the meeting, okay? Please. So, moving on, as always due on every meeting, we have an opportunity for citizens' comments. I'm not gonna read that unless somebody wants to speak. I'm not aware of anyone here, and no one is, so let's move on to the item four, which is discussion and action items, which is to discuss and review the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed operating budget, general fund line item expenditures, including wants versus needs, same thing for the enterprise, utility, and airport funds, and as time permits, we'll talk about staffing positions and things like that. Well, we may move things around, make, may mix things together, I'm not exactly sure, but, uh, I know there's a presentation. Now, I do know that, from my understanding, at this time, there's a hard stop at three PM, um, because one council member needs to leave for prior obligations, for, and, uh, it may recess several times in between that, as we, as we move through the meeting. I just wanna make everybody aware of that. So, it is my, my goal, literally, to move as quickly as we can and get as much approved as we can, so we could, or at least conceptually approved, so we can move forward for a future, uh, budget. But I know, I have a lot of questions, I know several council members have a lot of questions, so. Think there's gonna be quite a few.
Sure. All right, so, uh, a little bit more about the agenda today. We ordered lunch, and it should come around one o'clock, between twelve-thirty and one. It'll be up to you whether you wanna do a working lunch, or we just kinda take a brief recess, serve each, serve ourselves, and then continue. That's what I'd recommend, given the time.
Okay.
Uh, as I mentioned, my oldest made, uh, banana chocolate chip muffins, so, uh, y'all are welcome to those as well, now that the council's had their opportunity to have them.
Thank you.
What we're gonna do, the way this is ordered, obviously, is, is, is kinda, we, was shared at the last budget workshop, this ultimately is a council's meeting, so, yeah, we want to go the direction that is most beneficial and helpful to you. That said, the way that this is organized, I'm gonna go over the general fund, uh, I'm gonna go over, uh, basically, the first, what the proposed budget consists of, um, and then, uh, what was, what it doesn't consist of, you know, what, what got pulled out, what are the things that were unfunded, and then we're gonna have a question and answer period, that's, that's the way this is lined up. Then, under the enterprise fund, we'll go over kind of a similar approach with enterprise fund, uh, question and answer, and then the rates. The only real rate we're looking at is the gas utility, we could look at other rate adjustments as well, but, you know, I, I think we've had a lot of discussion around that, that our rates are fairly, uh, high as they are, where it comes to water and sewer, even if they aren't collect, you know, fully collecting, um, we aren't recommending an increase. Um, and then, we'll go over the airport, uh, budget, and then the last item that, that's in the presentation is staffing. Now, the reason that I have staff here today is because last time we had a workshop, there were some questions that came up, what, or you, the desire was to go through a line item budget, so to the extent that the council has questions about specific line items, um, you know, th- this is your opportunity to present those. I did not receive, Mayor, any questions from your council prior to this meeting, so I don't, it's, so if there are prepared questions, I didn't receive those. I say that, I mean, Councilman Lee has been blowing up our phones with his, his ideas, but not necessarily questions about the line item budget.
Scott.
Yes.
On this side, we don't see, it says connect guide.
Connection guide, enough.
The other side is good, this side is not.
Do you guys set that up?
Sorry.
Okay, there it is.
Good, thank you. Didn't know that was for my work yesterday.
Having, having said that, having said that, Scott, just real quick, I just wanna, real fast, broad stroke, so everybody out here, y'all know, I think y'all do great, I think you provide good stuff to the city, understand, any of the conversations is not personal, it's, we have a charge for trying to make the budget. Uh, my goal is to not raise any rate, or, not raise rates, not raise taxes, but live within our means. So, I just want, I want you guys to know that, go, all y'all folks to know that going in, we want a fair back and forth conversation on these things.
So I wanna point out the things that you have, that you should have in printed form, uh, in front of you, if you don't, Leroy Vidalis can get you what you need. Um, but first is a copy of the presentation that I'm about to go over, the next is a, uh, printing of the historical and proposed revenues for the general fund, and is that enterprise fund as well? Uh, cause that's just for me, thanks. Uh, fleet equipment, so, some questions about fleet, and then the final is that, the actual budget, the line item budget. All of these items, as a reminder, uh, are in your Teams folder or your SharePoint folder, that link has been sent out a couple of different times, uh, from Leroy, so. Uh, and if you have any issues accessing that, if you have a problem, like, please don't be shy, schedule a, a time for us to sit down, and I'll walk you through kind of how Teams and SharePoint is accessed, cause there's a lot of information out there, historical, et cetera. Um, so we wanna make sure y'all have access to that. All right, that said, uh, let's. You gotta let me know if there's, if it disappears on your side.
Okay.
Uh, all right.
Are y'all good with the lights?
Ma'am?
Are you good with the lights, do you wanna?
I'm, I'm fine, and, 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 if y'all are okay, Mr. Lee, are you trying?
Can you see?
Can you see okay? You have the paperwork printed following.
No, the screen is too small for you.
The, the, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir, okay, thank you.
All right, so first, in the general fund, this is really just for illustration purposes, and just to clarify, with our process, when Leroy and I go through the budget, the, the process we developed, developed in the last four years, any iterations with the council is, essentially, we get each department to provide. I'm gonna make sure that this picks up, to provide us with their proposed expenditures, and then, and we give them, prior to them, uh, giving that, uh, giving that to us, we give them a five-year historical look, so that, just like you all, they can see what they've spent in those items over the last five years, and figure out what the trend is, right? And then we go through, and generally, usually, we sit down with each department, and we'll actually, like, go through all of the proposed, proposed expenditures, and then make alterations. This year, I did not do that, because of, we, we were trying to kinda go a different direction with the policy document, and it's just been, as you know, it's been, uh, we've had political changes, council's changed over, and, and there's just been some, kind of, it's, it's been up in the air, to a certain extent, how we were gonna do this budget process. But that's generally how we, we go through it, and one thing to be aware of is that, um, as we've gone over successive years, since, since I've been here, I've been reallocating, if you will, different expenses to where I believe they really should have been. For instance, in the, um, enterprise fund, in the administration budget, there were a lot of items that, that really should have been in the individual utilities, but they're ending up in the kind of, that's treated as non-departmental, and they weren't non-departmental expenditures. And the same thing has happened in other places, where in the past, um, and this is pretty common, it's not unique to, to cash, cash real by any extent, but sometimes, um, staff will get used to, they'll, they'll run out of money in a line item, and so then they'll say, well, I don't have any money in that line item, so I'll go use this line item, but they'll code whatever that expenditure was to that new line item, instead of where it should have gone, right? Because they didn't have any money left in that line item. That was kind of the practice, if you will, uh, when I got here, and again, that's not unusual, but one of the things that we've worked with staff is, is training them on, no, 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 it's really, really important that we record expenditures to the line items they belong to, whether there's enough money there or not, because it helps us in our budgeting for future years. So we don't see, you're not gonna see, you shouldn't see any of that in the proposed budget, because we've been working on that over the last three or four years.
Real quick, and, and, and I gotta ask a question, so I'm gonna go ahead and say, uh, I don't wanna get bogged down in a lot of questions, but if somebody has a brief question on something, you say while we go, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
About somebody's, uh, I'm gonna ask you one question on that. I understand exactly, uh, so what you're saying in, in years past, that I have a thousand dollars in this line item, and I have five hundred dollars on there, but I done already spent the five hundred, so everything else, even though it's there, I charge you to this without changing the amount. Is that what you just kind of explained?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's just say.
Instead of this, saying over expended, and this one was short expended, we just, for lack of a better phrase, and don't take this the wrong way, we hid expenditures in other line items.
Yeah, and that wasn't the intent, but that's what happened.
That's what happened.
So I'll give you an example, for instance, we'll just say, you know, four years ago, small tools and equipment might have had.
Right.
You know, fifteen hundred dollars in it.
Right.
Well, there, they might have had a vehicle that had expenditures where it wasn't on it, it was unanticipated, something broke on it, went to the mechanic, and they spent, they only had twenty-five hundred dollars booked there, and it was a three thousand dollar bill. Well, they spent a hundred percent of that line item, the twenty-five hundred dollars, plus another five hundred, they went and borrowed it from another line item, but it didn't get.
No, 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 they, they, they were more worried with making line items work than the total budget, than the total department one. Basically, true expenditures weren't being truly accounted for, possibly.
Right.
In some respects.
Uh, just to be clear, that's not happening anymore, and our staff is very, uh, responsive to, to training and talking about that sort of thing, and so I think we've gotten, you know, like any organization, this continual improvement, and I think we get better and better every year.
Well, I agree with you.
Knowing what our costs are, and, and being fairly frugal with that. So, this, these first two slides are just the general fund, and just to kinda lay out where, how we got here, we had a proposed budget, the proposed budget was about seven hundred thousand dollars, right? In the, in the negative, we didn't have, it was, it was over budget, you know, our, uh, anticipating expenditures exceeded revenues by about seven hundred thousand, so Leroy and I took that, and we went and made changes, and that's what this is meant to highlight, is what did we change with that initial go-round? And, and what I'm trying to convey here is, you already have, in, in a very real sense, a needs-based budget, that we scraped out to, to our ability once, and then some. Um, and we got to a balanced budget in the general fund, a proposed balanced budget, two ways, one, straight, scraping out these costs, and then the other, you know, being a little less conservative with some of our revenues, principally the, uh, sales tax. Councilman Lee.
Are you assuming that if we don't have questions, that you go through this, or after that, if we're good with this?
No.
No.
No, I'll, I'll still look for council's direction at some point today to say, okay, are we good with this? I, I'm not gonna make any assumptions on, cause I, I think it's good for y'all to talk this out. So I'm not gonna make any, cause again, uh, we've, some of the, part of the conversation today, and this goes back to the policy orientation of the budget, that we started the year off with in January, when we talked about policy and presented different approaches to budgeting, I think it was January, it might have been February. But one of the things we need to discuss is, is council, and I think your, your staff needs to hear, is what are the services and service levels that matter to council? Are you satisfied with the current service, service levels? Are you satisfied with the current services that are offered? Uh, do you wanna make changes in those areas? Cause that's, when we talk about the budget, um, the ability to make major changes in the budget, really, it's in that policy area where you could say, and I'm gonna give an example, uh, Beth isn't here, she, she won't kill me, otherwise, I'd have to watch my back right now, but, for instance, there's no, there's no legal requirement for a city to have a public library. I'm picking on them, cause they're an easy unit of the, of the general fund to carve out, if you wanted to carve out. I'm not, to go on the record, be real clear, I'm not recommending that we not have a library, but just as a, just as, to help you all understand, the policy side of it, you as council, that's actually a policy decision that you make every time you adopt a budget. You're making the policy decision to have the services that we offer, public library, policing, at the levels that we're offering them, right? The, the number of vehicles, the number of people, that, et, et, et cetera. So that's the level of this, I mean, that's, that's kinda where I'd like the conversation to be, because it will, that will give me the direction on, okay, here are the meaningful changes, um, that we can make. We feel like as staff, we've done our job with the line item side of things, but, we'll get to that in a second. So this is, uh, I'm not gonna walk through these unless you want to, this is how we got to a proposed budget, and then, um, this is, these are the things in the general fund that were, I, I'm not gonna classify them as wants necessarily, Mayor, cause I know y'all talk about wants and needs, but these are items that were not funded. Um, and you can kinda determine whether you think that's a want or a need, cause I think that's kind of individual decision anyway, or.
Well, it all comes down to your policy decisions.
Right.
How you wanna proceed, what, what level of everything is. I use that term because the basic needs have to be met.
Yeah.
And then, and then it's kinda like, okay, yeah, it might be nice to have a new truck, but can we, can we defer that? For example, or can we do that, or do we need to have that now?
Well, and again, I go back to like, basic needs, you know, it, it really comes down to council, this, you know, the, the, the prior council made a collective decision, I don't remember if it was unanimous at the time or not, Sheena might be able to remember, but, or David, but, uh, of the heating of the pool. David, were you on council when that was made?
I, I don't think so, I think I was sitting out.
Yeah, so I think Sheena's our only legacy person here today, that was a part of that decision. Point is, I think that was unanimous decision, I know Herb fought hard, Councilman, uh, Dyer fought hard for that, but that's just an example of something that, it's a service that we provide, I certainly wouldn't call, qualify that as a need, right? I would say that's more of a, a community want, is it a good service to have? Absolutely, does citizens respond to it? Sure. Uh, but it is, and I think this point was made pretty loud and clear at the time, it is a subsidized service, meaning.
Right.
That there's no way we're ever gonna make, you know, if you're trying to break even, or even make money on that, that's not gonna happen, you're not gonna do that, heating a pool, and we've been very fortunate in the past, where we've accidentally made money at the pool. Most communities that I'm aware of, aquatic services, and I can point to probably a hundred different examples in the state of Texas alone, where there are cities that have aquatic services of some kind, whether it's an indoor aquatics, or in-ground pools, or what, what have you, uh, like we have, they don't make money. Usually, those are subsidized services, meaning, yes, they charge fees for entrances and passes like we do, but those, uh, never come, they always fall short of paying for the total cost of that benefit to the community. So just be aware, those are the types of things, again, those are all at the policy level. Um, so to go through this, step, I'm gonna put me the mic, so I can actually see this, and it's gonna be up to you all, how much discussion you wanna have on these items. We are not proposing, I wanna be clear, staff is not proposing that we go and spend money in these areas. There are, uh, there is a, uh, a CIP portion, so that's toward, that's between the enterprise, or between the airport and the staffing discussion at the end of this presentation, uh, where we can talk about CIP. There were some one-time expenditures that we would recommend if, if council supports them, that we make this year, in this budget, not in the next budget. Because you have, in, in your current proposed budget, like the one we're, we're living in right now, and we're spending in, you're, uh, estimated to be in the black by a, a certain amount, I don't remember the amount. Two hundred? No, the current, not the one we're proposing, the budget we're living in right now. Yeah, I wanna say it's like two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so in other words, that money will go to your general, your fund balance, unless you spend it this year. Um, now, you have already elected to spend some fund balance, but that's been out of the enterprise fund, that was for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for generators, and I'll do my best to remind you of that, you know, so that you remember, hey, yeah, we already, that money's kind of already spent. Um, but anyway, the, in the current budget, the year you're living in right now, there's, there's some excess funds that we're anticipating by the end of the year, our audit will actually confirm that after the budget closes next February or March sometime, but we, we try to keep, uh, our, our eyes on that as staff. Yes, Councilman Lee?
You made the, you made the statement, you made a fresh one there, you said when y'all first did this, we were about seven hundred thousand short, and then you went through it, and so what did it end up with, uh, I don't think you were able to wipe off seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we were, we ended up. Yeah, we did.
They did.
We, we ended up about forty thousand, twenty, between twenty and forty thousand dollars to the good, I think it was forty thousand dollars to the good. And that's, again, budget is a budget, it's not a, it, it, these are not, none of these, it's kinda like anything else, it's like getting a forecast, you know, none of these numbers will be entirely accurate at the end of, at the end of the day, but.
For, for clarity purposes, that's not seven hundred thousand dollars with the cuts, the biggest part of that is increased revenue projections.
Well, it's about fifty, it's, it's a little bit less than fifty-fifty, I'd say about forty percent of it came from revenue, and the other sixty was from cuts.
Okay.
We did cut.
I just don't want people to misunderstand that.
Yeah.
That we, 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 we sent it back, and there was seven hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts, no, there was some adjustments in other things.
Yeah.
There was a combination.
Yeah, we cut four hundred thousand roughly, and I can show you those real quick.
Sure.
You see that, um, there's fifty thousand dollars from, from the city administrator budget, that was for the, uh, interns, there's thirty thousand dollars for streets, um. We cut, uh, almost eighty out of the tourism development, and some of that was just from moving to, moving that to the, uh.
Yes, you shifted things.
Yeah, we shifted it to hot funds, that helped, that helped some, and what I'm not seeing is, uh. Yeah, but it's not red, why is it just not red? Oh, because, all right, so that's what's, kind of misleading, is, it's not misleading, they, their increase was a lot more than that, right? So the net change in PE is still a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more than we spent last year, but it's not.
Three hundred.
Sixty, or whatever it was.
Yeah.
We thought out, um, physician, K nine, and some other items that, that were in there for. Uh, and the same thing with parks, uh, parks, uh, is a net increase of thirty-two, but it was originally like one-twenty.
Right.
Right, so we cut that out, so the, uh, parks, uh, parks and PE were the two major areas that we cut. And then to your point there, the other forty percent roughly was, was increasing our sales tax, really looking at that.
I see.
And I, I feel comfortable about the, it, it's, I'm not being as conservative of sales tax as I'd like to be, but I feel comfortable with the numbers that I'm proposing, and I don't have that slide, but it is in the prior, uh, presentation, where we looked at our forecast for this year, uh, overall, we're up about eight percent, and I wanna say the forecast for next year is something like this year plus five percent.
Well, I, 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 I understand the fact that you, you, in a budget, you wanna budget your revenues lower and your expenses higher, but I'm with you on that, because some of the revenue projections, especially if you look at the trends, we were less than what the average, what the trends are showing, so you made those adjustments.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
This year was a little bit, you know, the past year, we've been, we've been really, really good on sales tax, like, double-digit growth, year over year. Uh, you have a, a, a presentation in front of you, that Darren Ham put together, as, just kind of justification, if you will, for his part, and what he's doing, and how he's working with, with the community to try and, uh, help our local businesses, et cetera. But, uh, this year, our trend isn't quite as, it's great, it's still positive, but we aren't double digits, like I said, I think we're gonna finish the year.
Like I said, I think we're going to finish the year, we'll see how the last few months come in, at less than 10% year-over-year growth. Again, that's not, that's nothing to be upset about, but it's not 16% like we saw the year before. All right. Which is another reason why I'm a little, I want to be a little more conservative there, but I think 5% is, is plenty. So then, we have, again, just a list of items that were, had in that desired improvements, and one I want to call attention to is the library, there are some one-time expenses there that are relatively small in nature, but I think could do a lot to improve your service delivery, and mostly it's because it's, you know, the library has a strain of staff, they just don't have very many staffs, they have one full-time person in the director, Beth, and then she has partner folks. Now, we have budgeted another full-time person, but we don't have one in that position yet, and that's something she's trying to evaluate and see if she can fill at some point. The point is, they just have limited staff, so the thing, the improvements she's asking for are automated related, so the things that would automate checkout, or automate printing, things that take up a lot of staff time, that would free them up to do programming and helping their customers.
Yeah, you, you were at the meeting, and, and basically, it's on the library guy, they spent, they said they spent an inordinate amount of time making copies for people and doing those kinds of things, which some automation would help free up time, which would get them maybe a little more breathing than they have now, so I'm certainly a thumbs up on that one.
Well, it reduces the kind of the pressure to have work, yeah, because right now they're under staff. So that, I want to, I want to highlight those, there, obviously, there are other items, one of the things that I can really personally like to see is digitization, you know, writing, above us right now, above, well, not above your head, actually, don't care, there's all of the, a lot of file storage, I don't know how many pounds of storage there is that's up there, it's a lot. And we are, we are working to get the, we have some excess furniture, some things that I'm working to get cleaned out, but we have all these files that I would love to see digitized. The initial cost of digitization, digitization is going to be expensive, like on the order of a couple, 100,000, 200, in that range, it's a lot of money, but once you go through that digitization process to maintain it going forward, there's a whole lot less. You're going to spend 10 to 20 a year to keep things digitized. And, you know, one of, another, one of the challenges that Leroy and I have talked about since I got here is, man, like, for instance, our court records, there's so much in that process of paper, and I would, I would really like to see that go digital. Now, some of that's just a challenge, because you've got, you're doing it digitally, you've got to think about, you have to get signatures along the way, and the files have to be given to the prosecutor, and to the judge, and so that means they probably would have to have digital tablets at some time, where they're able to sign, review all those records, and frankly, there's some amount of paper, just like you all experienced on council, that people are going to want anyway, even if it is all digital, they're going to say, well, I want the printed copies, but even if we're producing printed copies, it's not the cost of producing those that's the issue, it's the cost of maintaining them in the space. So I, I think that there's an opportunity to, to improve that process, we haven't got there, we talk a lot about it, but you know, one of, one of my issues is, I need to find a municipal court that does really do the job of that, that we could go and basically evaluate, see how they do it, what they're doing.
Is the digitization a photograph of the document that cannot be altered?
No, so it would be, well, anything can be altered in this day and age, right? I mean, with AI, and with advances in technology, anything can be altered, doctored in some ways, but the way these files be stored and kept, they would be scanned images, and they should be readable and searchable, so that makes them OCR, they'd be auto-character recognized, and we want that for your records, so that way, if municipal courts looking for someone for John Doe, they can type in John Doe and insert that, that digital list. Right now, they have to go to a file cabinet, that's the other thing, if you have a tour, you know, if you have a tour in City Hall, then you really should, just look at the number of file cabinets we have, with different things, different places, and that's part of, when we talk about space maximization, and be able to, later, we'll talk about City Hall ideas, because City Hall could get a lot more use if we could get rid of all the places where we're storing paper, that we don't need, that no one should, in this day and age, no one should have to go to a file cabinet to look up records. It should be able to be online. Now, if you want certain documents that you get all the time in paper, then.
I, I agree with you on that, but I would also pose to Deborah.
There's certain things.
Records retention, there's certain things that got to stay forever, and there's certain different, but there's, but there, I, I know you're busy, but are there things that could be literally purged?
Yes, well, and we have a records retention company, and they would be one of the ones that we have looked at in the past.
Right.
And digitized. Some of the permanent records up there would be for personnel, some court records are permanent.
Right.
The tickets are not, but there's a certain length of time, some of the court cases are past cases from the court, or municipal and police, is not, they're 80 years, so you have to keep them. As far as digitizing, I'm not sure.
Well, I want to clarify, we are purging, so.
Okay. I just want, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, because I didn't mention that. I don't want you to think that we've got files that we can get rid of tomorrow, because actually, she stays on top of that pretty closely, and works in an organization that comes in and.
And that's her next turn.
Tracks all our records, but even that gets to be a lot, you can save money there if they were all digital.
Oh, I agree, because even in public works, there's different things, like natural gas, okay, our gas system went in at 62, and the pipeline records are from cradle to grave, forever, okay, on gas. The other ones have different retention schedules, depending on what the utility is and what it's for. So I'm familiar with those, and I, I know, but I just wanted to ask.
Right, and I know a lot of it we were looking at too, and this will take time, and.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to get a quote on it, the maps.
Sure.
Now, we have some maps up there that we probably need to have digitized to where we would be able to keep them, because they're paper.
No, I think it's a great.
We don't have my law here, so, you know, it's a little bit harder, but there's certain things.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the, the federal file records management system, it's very clear, some things it's parroted, and some are when they're superseded.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and the city adopted the state, and so when they come in, each one of those boxes up there are marked for when they can be destroyed. And it's, it's better.
Yes, okay. I didn't want to get off on a tangent. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to mention, one of the things we also provided you that's in that folder that I just asked you to print and bring to you and review it over later, but when we're talking about this budget, there, there, we took the, this list, other things that council mentioned, we broke them up into operational expenses.
Okay.
And one-time expenses, because again, you need to know for a policy change, when you're going to make an operational change, that's an ongoing expense.
Right.
And you should anticipate having to refund every year. If you're going to do a one-time expense, some one-time expenses have some amount of operational, right? You buy a thing, maybe you only bought it for one time, but now you got to pay for fuel, and you got to pay for maintenance, et cetera, right? Or whatever the thing is. So I don't want to brush that under the rug, but generally, your operational expense, ideally, is, is what the digital investment is. So we will, we'll bring that to you, and that might be something you may be able to discuss, Senator.
I would certainly be in favor of indexing everything we have first, and maybe have a better paper storage system before we digitize, and the reason I say that, and I asked you the other question, I have an original printed-out copy of the CZO, okay, and I brought up in this room, that the online version of the CZO is incorrect. It shows what you can and can't put on a particular area in town the same, so one says you can't, one says you can't, and that's my point. There's something that people would refer to that's completely incorrect, because it's digitized, and it's different.
Right.
And so I don't trust digitization unless I've got a piece of paper to back it up.
Well, is it different because it was digitized, or is it different because that was just an error that was caught in that version?
It's a colored-in block, how do you make a mistake with that?
Well, because the error is the key.
Yeah.
The key says that colored-in or not colored-in are both approved, so the only way it can be not approved is if it requires a special use.
The language is the same.
Okay, so this is good, online has been fixed.
I'll check about three weeks ago, if it's still going, but I'll check it again.
Anyway, I do believe that we have a pretty good, you know, I'm not going to stand here and say we got everything, but of our daily operations, so that's municipal court, that's our city secretary, the other, we have things pretty well followed, because we have to, we have, we have to go find them ourselves. Now, if you get into historical records, you go further back, more things that have been donated to the city or what have you, I'm not going to stand here and say we have a good record of that. Frankly, we had a, they had an incident where some of our files disappeared, from actions of others, and I still, to state, I don't know what. She isn't here anymore. Yeah, so I'm going to skip through this and go to, I think, questions, because again, we'll have a list and all this, but just kind of for clarity, well, what's in the budget? Well, there's a 3% cost of living increase, now this is in the general fund, it's also in the enterprise fund, and we showed you kind of what, what is the magnitude of that effect, if you will, it's not $384,000. Keep in mind, that's not all salaries, when you increase someone's pay, you're also increasing the TMRS and other contributions that are related to those benefits, so that's your cost to do that. Healthcare insurance and ancillary benefits, this says we have, we see that they agreed with, we actually had those yesterday, we are looking at, we were hit, okay, so backing up on health insurance, just so you know, when we looked at health insurance last year, we were being faced with a 13% increase, I believe it was, from TML. We decided to shop the rate, and they gave us a no-shop rate of a 5% increase, I think it was 5%, if you will. And then after a lot of different, after we shopped it, they basically said, okay, we won't go up on you at all, but by that time, we got several different looks, what we ultimately, I say we, the council supported going with the curator, which was a, what's that here? 16 or 17% savings? So just to kind of give, give you a picture, from a cost standpoint, we didn't get into benefits in the order of which one was better, but from just a purely cost standpoint, you were looking at a 13% increase, and instead, you got a 16 to 17% decrease last year. This year, on renewal, as is a lot of times the case, these health insurers want a renewal.
Right.
They came to us with a renewal of 17%, that's a pretty significant increase. We had been negotiating back and forth, and you got that down to 7%, 7% is about a $40,000 cost, I think, yeah, it's $20,000 to the general fund, and about $20, something to the enterprise. That's manageable within our proposed budget, as I stated before, our general fund was to the good about 40, so it will be to the good about 10%. So I'm pleased with that outcome, I did not, if that was a no-shop rate, we are shopping it, frankly, it was very, very disruptive to staff to make that change, I knew it would be, we had a lot of issues where people had to go through a process to get re-qualified for medicines, they've been taking, it's pain, I don't, I don't like it any more than anybody else, but the other day, you know, we don't want to make that change again unless we have, so we would have to, so we're recommending staying right where we are, just before you end up with a disruption, and we'll see what next year.
Yeah, there was a lot of concerns with staff because of continuity of care.
Right. I think we've resolved most of that, but again, I'm not going to, but, medical, y'all, I mean, insurance is a very business, and they're, they're, it's a very profit-driven business, deals with people's lives, you can't do those two things, that's profit, and some of them's quality of life, it gives you answers for us, and so that's.
It's, it's always tough when you have a small group, that you.
Now, our group has done very, very well, our, our utilization, we wanted things to help us, was very good.
Good.
Our general health is good as well, I'd love to see people using our fitness plan more, if we have, if we have a fit well, that, I, I'm anticipating that, I think, careers are durable.
I agree.
I did have a question.
Sure, yes, sir.
So you flipped kind of quickly past those orange slides, so there were the gray slides, and then there were the orange slides. Are the orange slides essentially what we had before the adjustments? Like, is the orange slides what we saw last time?
No, so this is what we had, if you will, this was the original proposed budget.
Okay.
And, and these are what we're highlighting as the changes we may get to that proposed. The original proposed budget did not include all that orange stuff.
Okay.
The orange stuff was, when y'all were, one of the requests we received from council was, give us your proposed budget, and then you're kind of, if you, if we could give you more money, where would you spend that money?
Right.
What things would you recommend to us? So the orange is those recommendations, they were never baked into the proposed budget, because when we ran our initial numbers, we knew we were in trouble, right? We couldn't afford all that, but they're still there, because some of them, as I said before, are one-time expenses, if you all may want to consider doing it for one year. And again, I don't want to, I, I want to give y'all time to have those discussions, which I think we're just about.
Go ahead.
The question's on the general fund, and this is kind of an opportunity, it's up to you how you want to proceed, and how you want to allocate your time today, do you want to try and knock out the general fund, and, and get that resolved, or do you want to kind of have all of the discussion, general, enterprise, rates, staffing, and then come back and say, okay, what do you want to do with it?
You're asking me that?
I'm asking all of you, because you're running.
Okay, well, I, well, I'm going to tell you, this is, we need to do them all, but we're legally only required to do the general fund one.
Right.
Okay, so we need to get through that. We need to get to a point that we can agree, and then establish a proposed tax rate. The business side of the house, the enterprise funds, we need to do them, and we need to probably get them all done, I'm not trying to set it aside, but the priority is the general fund.
Understood. So to the general fund side of things, you've got, I would go back to this, if you have line item questions, I don't want to miss that opportunity, are there questions that you have, where you want to understand, why are you spending this amount of money on this thing, that we need to help settle your minds on? Bob should have said yes.
Yes, please, Mr. Lee.
Why don't you let other people ask questions before I do?
Well, if, 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 let's go through this, I'll just start right off the bat, is, is,
do you have funds in there for a street maintenance crew to go out there and put equipment on the ground, and clear these drainage ditches, and do these silt lines, equipment, when we talked about that before, because that's an expense on there, and I'm willing to forfeit other things to make that in there.
So the drainage utility, first off, we could use more people, I would love, drainage, we talked about this, drainage is its own utility.
But drainage, but, but technically, streets and drainage are a governmental function, they're not a, they're not an enterprise function.
Understood, you're right.
So, so.
There is a drainage utility on paper that exists.
That's correct, and it was created to pay a debt service.
Right, so that's all I'm saying, it has its own.
Right, I understand, yes, sir.
One of the things that, that I proposed two years ago, I think it was, was, considering there was a lot of discussion about drainage, and I guess you may recall this, when we talked recently, you did my hat, that was very, a lot of shit, about basically having, this was Devin was here, we were talking about how are we going to do streets, we proposed buying equipment, doing in-house, and we looked at, well, here's what we would take to do our own street program, with our own equipment, and we also looked at drainage, and said, you know, we really could use two people, basically doing right-of-way maintenance and drainage, and have them, that, that would be.
A full-time job.
A full-time job, right? We did do that, I think we, council did not, not allow us to do that.
Okay, okay.
Because it'd be expensive. So right now, we do have a street department that does right-of-way maintenance and drainage as well, and you, you, the council has authorized the expenditure of the drainage utility monies, there's excess reserves in there, so you issue some debt, that debt is going to be used for the Garcia Creek project, most of it, we'll see how much, at the end of the day, gets spent out of borrowed money. What is remaining of borrowed money, and what was already in that fund, and I want to say it was like $450,000 that was sitting in that fund roughly, is being spent on all of those Athens improvements that we've discussed previously, so that's the Geneva Street channels we built right now, it's relying on those cars, we're going to spend $125,000, $150,000 of that money, just making those improvements in Geneva to that drainage channel. Then, we got to go in and, we're going to be renting equipment, but we'll go in and reshape the bardishes, so that's a long way of saying, yes, it is in the budget, sort of, like, like, it's not in the general fund budget anywhere, but, but it's been funded, those improvements, the maintaining, the drainage aspects, the issue that I have is, you know, like Houston asked me today, when are you going to do that? When, when, I would like to know when this, this bardishing particularly is going to be reshaped, and I said, look, I can't give you a timeline, because it's sustaining three people that are doing the dam project, the Geneva Street project, the right-of-way maintenance, maintenance, and, you know, other, maintaining our roads, and they've got a lot of work orders, and we're, we're gonna handle them in the process we can, but I can't, if, if the council says, I want this done by this period of time, then we probably needed to look at either hiring additional people, or getting a contractor coming to do that work. We're capable of doing the work, but we aren't capable of doing the work in a set timeframe unless you de-prioritize something else. Does that make sense?
Well, it is, but I want to ask a question. It, I understand the concept of the public works as primary functions, this one does this, this one does this, this one does this, this one does this, and the ability to move, group together as needed, and move folks around. Is there not enough people, I know there's a lot going on, but there's not enough people that can group together to help the street department, or is it just a one-way help?
I'm gonna let Johnny answer that question, but my gut is, no, I mean, no. We, electric cutters against water cutters.
Okay.
The sewer plant's only got three people at it, and that's pretty much, they're there all the time.
I'm not, I'm not asking for anybody to commit to that, because I understand, things can change on a daily basis.
I don't understand, it sounds like everybody's in their same boss, they are not. And we got some people that rule train, but.
Right, right, right.
But we're understaffed, kind of, water's got right now a number of people, and the sewer plant's got the right number of people in there. Electric's got the right number of legislative positions, right, to do, handle electric work.
Okay.
But where we're understaffed is in parks and streets, and ironically, that's kind of the two areas that work, usually go hand-in-hand the most, and we don't have enough people in either one of those to do what.
It's amazing, those are the general fund positions that are in public works.
Yeah, go figure, right?
Yeah.
Usually pass money.
Yeah, those are the general fund positions in public works, that there's no monies for them, or not enough.
Not enough.
Not enough. Okay, all right, I'll step on up. Sheena, did you want to go through some things on the general fund?
Oh, let's see. So I know at the, last time we talked about the general fund, we did have the one-time fee and the fees down the road.
Operational versus one-time? Okay, yeah. Did you print this?
Correct. I remember, I remember seeing that. So, looking at the unfunded expenditures that we have, we have in the presentation today.
We can take, we can take one.
Yes, thank you. And I, I remember we, city council had asked each department to get racked and stacked their top three things that they would say need, or would like to have done. So, and we had talked about doing, like, how much it would cost if we did all the one-time cost items. And I know we tossed that around as well. So looking at the one-time fee things, I see we have building repairs and maintenance of $30,000, but what would that be applied to, on the city administrator?
Yeah, so it depends on, this goes back to what we just talked about at the last council meeting, which was really mainly the roof, but then there, there are other items, I mean, it depends on if we're really gonna do city hall or not, and y'all are gonna have that conversation in the CIP discussion, you received the email from Councilman Lee, so, but if we were to, that would be mostly city hall.
Okay.
To do repairs or maintenance.
Okay. And then the library, library needs some TLC, it really does, as well. So that's all one-time cost. The canine purchase at one-time cost, and we, we need that, we're growing too much, we have stuff coming through here, we need to make sure our PD has all the tools necessary to do it, instead of calling and waiting on San Antonio to bring us a canine. Then under, under streets, like you said, we had talked about getting them equipment, and I see equipment on there again. We didn't buy the equipment, I thought we had earmarked.
For which?
For streets, that says the scag mower, actuators, or dump truck.
We did buy, so y'all went through.
Tell me the scag mower, what is a scag mower?
Zero.
Yeah. You know, lawnmower. Okay. What do you use it for?
So we, it's not that we didn't buy the equipment, I want to answer Councilman Martinez's question first.
Okay, yeah.
We did buy the equipment. We did not, I mean, that's two years ago, so there's, this is the equipment list today. These are things that, two years ago, we didn't need to replace that were, you know, still had some left, some life left in them, and now we're doing it. So it's not a question of whether, we did spend the money, we did go buy the things that you authorized. These are new purchases that would be needed.
Okay.
And, did you want, well, Mayor, did you want me to?
Yeah, I just want to ask you, what kind of zero-turn mower are you buying for 15K? Because I just wanted to ask. That's, that's an awful lot of money, for one. Do y'all buy through the state bid?
Yeah, those are grass, and either, it's either zero-turn, or like the eight-foot trailer, or the John Decker tractor.
Okay.
One of those.
I, I'm not against those, I'm just trying to tell you that 15 grand is a lot for those. I just bought them, I know.
And they'll be commercial.
Yes, sir. Okay, okay. And we buy equipment through buy board or through a state bid?
Right.
Okay, even though they're below the bid, we still get state pricing?
Right.
Right? Okay. I just wanted to ask that. Same thing with actuator, attenuator on the truck. What, what, what's going wrong with the dump truck?
Dump truck, dump truck.
So what are you looking for?
Would be for like, what we're for the highway, city?
Yes, sir.
So when we go in that, for the, you said all that, for Christmas.
Okay. It's a safety issue. Thank you. That's, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
That, that, that needs to be, like, annotated here, as a safety.
It makes a difference.
It does, it makes a huge difference.
Yep.
Makes me not ask the question, because safety, I'm all about it. All right, so under RV park, we have miscellaneous RV park improvements at Red Call. What are we looking at for that?
So one of the things we, I think I talked about this briefly, but we had done a few of the spaces in the RV park to, to basically beautify it, add curbs and crush granite and just put some concrete down. The, the RV, the bathrooms and, and the RV Red Call itself, they're just, it's kind of like the library in here, like, it's just, it needs TLC. So that's really what that's about. But some of that is because I'd asked to make some improvements, the RV park, to continue that process, to make those spaces a little bit nicer as we go on. But that's a, yeah.
Well, quick on RV parks, when's the last time the park board looked at the, the rates? The rental rates?
I don't.
Consideration for the rental rates at RV parks, because we have resident people staying in the established residency.
Well, we don't, we don't, they, they, six months, and some of them leave, and they come back.
Around the block, come back again in the six months.
Well, they don't, they, they have to be gone for a period of time, so it's not like.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, they have to relocate, and they generally do, but, but we do get some of the same people come back, and they'll stay six months with us, and they'll go some, how long do they have to be away?
Thirty days.
Yeah, three months.
You have mailboxes still down there? Okay.
Yeah, three months. So they're gone three months, and then they can come back for another six. So we, some people do take advantage of that, but not, not a whole lot. As far as the rates, again, you all set the rates, I don't, I mean, council does, obviously. If, if Parks Board did anything, it'd be to recommend.
That's what I was asking about, recommendation.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that.
When's the last time they looked at them?
Yeah.
It's just a, it's a task.
I don't, probably the last time we looked at them was a couple of years ago, I would guess.
Just wanted to ask. Thank you, I'm sorry, Sheena, I'm piggybacking with you. Okay.
Great, thanks. Under animal services, I know we, we harped on this, that it, it is important for our people to have body cameras, so I'm all for that, because with all the craziness going on in the world right now, something that they can come across, I'm all for that.
Okay, I actually, question on that one. There was a thing in the paper not long ago about a grant for a euthanasia chamber, for animal, for city casual animal control services. What's the status of that, and what's going on there?
A euthanasia screen?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to look.
An incinerator. An incinerator.
Oh, incinerator, that's not euthanasia, that's an incinerator.
What, you burn the bodies, or?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's the carcasses. So we do a lot of cleanup along the highway and other places, and that would give a, in the past, those just get dumped, right?
Okay, maybe I have my terms drawn. That's what people ask.
Yeah, incinerator. So that, that has been, oh my God, Jonah deserves a lot of, a lot of recognition, and some kind of, some kind of Purple Heart.
I think Josh and the guy, the folks with, Carl, the, the, I think they do great. But one of the comments in the public was, okay, we're giving this great thing to him, that he's adopting a lot of animals, but then he's trying to get a grant to get an incinerator to get rid of them.
No, 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 not at all. Not at all.
It's perception.
Yeah, sure.
So I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, that's definitely not the, that's not the purpose of that. So.
Well, I'm glad we're asking.
Yeah, 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 I'll clarify that real quick. We'll, we'll get something out there, I guess, but, they, yeah, they have, they just got recognized for a 90% no-kill rate.
I know.
So obviously, we're.
And that's great.
We're, we're doing our best to save all the animals we can.
Yes, sir.
But short of it is, that grant was given to us through the ACOG.
Okay.
And Chris Cox, y'all met, who was with Waste Management at the time, was at ACOG and helped us get that grant. It has been two and a half years to get, first, we had a delay in the, in the actual, where we ordered it from, was, it was overseas, and it took like six or eight months to get here. And then, when we got it here, the TCQ process to get it approved began, and that just now, yesterday, I think, yesterday, the day before, I think it was yesterday, I got the email from TCQ saying, you're good.
It's a disposal unit, or disposing carcasses.
I thought she said, okay, maybe not. Well, maybe not. Maybe there's some more drama. I mean, some things that should have been handled, we're, through COG, when we got the grant to begin with.
Sorry.
We're having to go back and revisit. So bottom line is, it's still not in use.
Okay.
Because we have to have TCQ permit to use.
But we have the unit?
But we have the unit. We've had it for a while. We don't want to do anything with it until we can.
Oh, no, we want to make sure we have full permits, permission, everything.
Right, right.
Before we fire it up.
So we're still, I thought we had to resolve that, but, we're still working through that.
You get, we get asked questions, and we just want to.
Right.
Social media, don't.
I think we have to, I thought, I thought the email said, you have, we have to go publish now, that we have it. Okay, all right.
Just an explanation.
I think we're close, I hope we're close, but man, TCQ, if they can make a.
They're our friends.
Yeah, not me. I don't know, I'm done.
Okay.
I'm so frustrated.
Sorry, Sheena, go ahead.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay.
Under IT, is this enough money realistically with all the computer problems we've been having? And, well, you laugh, but I mean, is it really enough money?
For, I.
$64,200.
That's done.
It's, I.
What, what are you looking at, though?
Yeah. Under the unfunded request, general fund, IT, telecommunications, secondary internet backup, 1320, 132, at city hall, public works, library, police and park. I don't see that as enough.
Well, that's, yeah, that's just for the secondary back, that's just for that aspect of it. IT, you, you're funding IT, and you're funding to the tune of about $200,000, and that's all, that's not, I don't want to make that sound like that's all VC3. That is VC3 plus some of the Tyler Technologies cost, and some of the other, like, we, we have other expenses through the PD for their softwares, et cetera. All, a lot of that is being funded in that same IT budget line item, and we can give you a breakout of what those are. But I, I think I shared this before, you know, I looked, when I compared our IT costs on a per capita basis, to other cities our size in this region, the city manager sent out one of these requests for, how much are you spending on IT, because different people are considering it at the same time. We were, we were on the, way on the lower end as far as our, our expense. Anybody who in-sources it, so they've got their own IT departments, they're spending a million plus on IT, and they're spending, like, I don't know, it was $20 per person or something for IT needs, and we're down in the, whatever it was, $2 range or something, so.
I, I would want the secondary backup definitely for the police department. I shouldn't see that as an unfunded, because if something happens, this is the police department, we need, they need to have access to, to their stuff, so.
Yeah, that would be a one-time redundancy effort. And that, that we, yeah, so we put together, I mean, I've got a plan, I just, it's just not funded. So that would be a one-time expense to fund that plan, to then give us the redundancy at each location. Because you're already, we actually already have Spectrum and RISE. RISE, if you're unaware, RISE broadband is, is the fiber internet company, they came in and provided at no charge fiber internet to each of the library, city hall, the PD, the park facility, and public works. So we have five facilities that we are not paying for service, but we receive service, and that's our principal service. As a backup to each of those locations, we also have spectrum gigabit connections. So that when, if we, but, but the problem is, we don't have a failover to go between RISE and Spectrum, so that if there were an incident with the RISE, which is the least likely of the two, because theirs is mostly underground, I say mostly because up until you get to your building. We don't have a failsafe that makes an automatic switchover. And switching over create, depending on the, depending on the location, creates all kinds of issues, because a lot of these are IP-based, a lot of your services, whether it's your printers or whatever. And so when you switch, if you were to have a failure, a failure is bad, because you don't have any internet, depending on how long it's gonna be out, you have to make a decision, do we want to switch over or not. If we have to switch over, then you're gonna spend several hours with the tech, going through and resetting the, the IP configs on all the devices that need them. And that's, there's a whole host of those. Anyway.
So, so the, all the facilities are on the same internet at the same time, or different ones?
No, differently. It's not a looped. We did not, we looked at.
No, no, what I'm getting, what my point is, city hall, police department, public works, library, they're all on RISE, or some are RISE, some are Spectrum?
They should all be on RISE. The only reason I say should is, I need to confirm what, which one is the principal supplier at the library, because I know, like, for instance, yesterday, they had an outage, a brief outage, and they should have been on, they should be on RISE, but, but it makes me think that, that maybe there's a portion of what they're doing that's actually on Spectrum.
Well, I would think we would know there are city-owned facilities, and we should say what the service provider is in each one.
Yeah.
As the primary, and the other one being redundant. I think we should.
Yeah, when we were getting all that set up, some of it, yeah. So, some, keep in mind, there's, there's your public access Wi-Fi, so like in here, you have a, you have an employee Wi-Fi, and then you have a public access Wi-Fi. So one of the things that, when we were setting it up in some of those locations, we said, well, we, we'll take, for our business, the things that are, that we have to have, we're gonna put those on RISE, and things that are like to have, like the customer access portal, we'll put those on Spectrum. And so I think that may be what's.
So you mix and match.
Yeah. I think, but I need to confirm.
Each one of these facilities have their own servers, right? Public Works have servers?
Yeah, Public Works has servers, the city hall has servers.
Library have servers?
I don't think the library has servers.
They're just all on desktop-type stuff?
Well, they're.
Or network?
They're bridging to us.
Bridging to you.
So I think we have two, basically two.
PD has its own servers?
Yeah, PD has its own servers, for obvious reasons, yeah.
Okay.
And some of those, you know, depending on the applications, some of them are still bridged to us for various, like municipal court, for instance.
And backup is through, the cloud or tape?
About eight different ways. So we have physical backups, and then we have local backups, and then we have cloud backups. So we have, yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, Sheena.
Oh, no, no, if, if I can say.
I'm with you too. I've, I've seen it, I've seen it where, and it happens, it happens. We just went through it, and I know you guys have to do it too, it's a cybersecurity training. Somebody opens something the wrong way, and it crashes everything, and it takes you three weeks, or three days to a week to try to recover everything.
Yep.
So you're only as good as the backup information you have, and how fresh it is.
That's correct. So we are, are, we have 24-hour backups.
Okay, okay.
So our, the, our data, extensively, the, the most data we should lose would be in a business, at a given business day.
Okay.
We will have everything from the prior day.
Right.
And before.
Does that backup include security cameras that we have out and about?
No, our, our security camera setup is not great. I mean, we just don't. We, we've had hotpodge, like, we don't have one security camera provider that does, there's been hotpodge as far, as far as what we have, and a lot of that, some of them are working, some of them aren't, I won't get into which ones, but.
Okay, that's to be under information technology. A lot of people see those cameras, and, oh, okay, if something happens to me.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't want to put it under IT, but, but I see your point, I would probably put it under, like I said, create a separate security line, so that we can track that separately. Because IT gets to be everything, and it's.
We can talk about security measures, that qualifies for an exact assessment, so we talk, we talk about that, that we want as far as whatever, but as far as budget, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
The details of it, we can talk about.
So, yeah. So for instance, court security could be, I, I think there is a court security fund, it's not, it's got a lot of money in it, but it, it has the ability, so you have certain restricted funds, we don't talk a lot about them, but, but just for your information, especially if you're new, there are, you have certain funds that are restricted for certain purposes, so the parks has a fund, it's only, can only. Are restricted for certain purposes. So the parks has a fund, it's only, can only be spent on park stuff. Uh, the court has at least three different funds, I think. There's a technology one, there's a court security one, and I think there's a third one maybe. Oh, just two, sorry, court, technology and security.
Go ahead, man.
Okay, um, and then I got one other thing. Now, I'm not sure if it falls under this or utility fund. You had mentioned that Tech Dot informed us we have to move some stuff out to the right way.
Yeah, I had a meeting about that yesterday, but what's your question?
That's gonna be utility.
Which, okay, I was gonna say, which part of money are we gonna have to look at?
That'll be your utilities and it'll, it'll come, unfortunately, it'll probably come out of your fund reserves and I don't know the, the, uh, cost. We are going to joint bid that with Tech Dot as part of the project.
Okay.
We, they've, they're doing a lot of initial, just to give you an idea, we're, we're doing a lot of initial work engineering wise to go and locate and that kind of thing. The initial kind of meeting yesterday, um, anyway, I don't want to get over my skis. I, I, I don't think it's gonna be too bad. It's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be as far as what we have to move and what we don't have to move. Um, but there's still some water lines up on the hill. So the hillside, what they're doing is a forty inch down, uh, rebuild. And some of that slope and some other stuff, so that's, that's four feet of depth. Um, so we do have a couple of water crossings up on that hill that we may have to, to look at. They should be deep enough, frankly, should be at sixty inches or so, um, but we don't know. And I don't know what the material is and we've got to look at whether we have to replace those. Uh, the others that they're doing along for, uh, long ninety and four seventy-one are all shallow depth. And then it's just a matter of, uh, yeah, whether we have to relocate those or not, but it doesn't look like we will. No, I appreciate you asking about that because I didn't have an update for y'all until yesterday.
No, 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 ask the questions. And I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no, no, no. And then if I don't think we can talk about pool and heaters, are the heaters working?
They are. So, uh, it was a debacle. I'm gonna gloss, I'm not gonna gloss over, it was a little bit of a debacle how that all folded out. I'm not, I'm not pleased with, um, our partner on that project, but, uh, they are all working.
Okay, I was just making sure we don't have anything unfunded.
No, one of the things that's unfunded is Councilman Lee has talked about wanting to cover those. I don't know what they, I don't have a, a cost estimate, but twenty-five hundred bucks, I don't know, something like that.
To cover the.
The heaters. No, not the pool, the heaters. Now, we have talked about buying a cover for the pool. I think that's more in the.
Are we running natural gas on those heaters or electric? Natural gas, okay. Who sets the temperature rating? Does anybody have the ability to change it? Okay, thank you. You understand where I was going?
Absolutely.
I have people that talk to me every time.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a thermostat that people can just go up and change.
But you understand why I asked.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because you, 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 uh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna fight a heat. But at the same token, this, this ain't your hot tub. This is, if the, if the normal water temperature on a ninety-five degree day is eighty degrees. Or hypothet, seventy-five degrees, that's the best you're gonna get.
Well, I'm gonna.
In my opinion.
I'm gonna speak to that real quick. So when we, when, when council made the decision to heat the pool, it was with an understanding of, of what the estimated cost would be. And I want to say that our estimated cost for gas to heat the pool for the period of time when it would need to be heated was like forty-six thousand. Now granted, our, um, heaters weren't working, so they've used a lot less gas. But point is, I think we, uh, underperform or overperform, however you want to look at it. Uh, we performed very well in that, that our gas expense didn't come anywhere near that. I think it might have been closer to twenty-four.
I, I think overall, I mean, I, I've got my druthers both ways on here, but it's a service. And I would hope, I would hope that if we get things where we're working and consistent, that we get more people to use it. Which helps cover the cost.
Yeah.
I would hope that.
Right now, I'm, I'm just, I just can't get this community center built fast enough. As soon as we get that built, I think that'll. We'll, we'll return to some normalcy where the pool is, is concerned. There, again, there are some pool improvements. One-time expenses that have been requested both by the Otters and the other groups and, uh, pool reels for the lines. Some other things that are relatively low in cost, um, that would be one-time expenses. The, the most expensive thing that I'm aware of is the pool cover. I could be wrong, but, uh, there's pavilions and other things have been requested. But the pool cover, like I said, is about forty thousand dollars.
She knows you're good. Is it, cause I, I think Councilman Lee would like to ask something about the pool. Oh, I, I want to ask you before I do that. Yes, sir, please.
Several months ago, I sent out a request to the, uh, Parks Keeper to see if they could find a less expensive way to heat the pool. And understand the heaters are all used for a short period of time, uh, maybe like four months, something like that.
Something like that.
Okay, it's not the entire winter. And so, you know, people were using a pool before there ever was heaters and they continue to use the pool. Uh, Nicole, what's her last name?
Shriner.
Shriner, yeah, she, uh, she gave me a forty-five minute, uh, uh, lesson on the pool and pool temperatures. And the pool temperature is, for the group that does exercising, are not necessarily comfortable for the people that go there. And do sports kind of things in the pools. And so she said frequently, if the pool is, is not within this narrow band for them. They can't be in the water very long because it's, it does issues with their muscles and everything. So the temperature is very critical, uh, depending on, you know, who's using the pool. And so, of course, the heaters haven't been working, uh, satisfactorily since we put them in, I think. And I heard this, this request some time ago, maybe from Herb, that there's a lot of P B C pipe out there where the, uh, where the heaters are. In the entire section of the, of the heaters doesn't take any more than maybe ten feet by fifteen feet, something like that.
At most, yeah.
And, uh, the P B C pipe and everything else like that is subject to, you know, rain damage, heat damage, sun damage will basically eat that stuff alive over time. And so you know you could buy a, in a carport, uh, for a couple thousand bucks, that's way bigger than what you want. And so it appeared to me that, uh, if, if it was important to maintain those heaters in, in good condition. So they weren't subject to as much of the, of the elements as they are now, but we, we consider putting some kind of huddle of them to get them some sun. And rain, uh, hail protection, if you will. But, uh, I thought it was interesting that we only heated the pool a portion of the year. The school uses the pool a portion of the year. And, uh, after this heat's turned off, they still go back and exercise. So, uh, to me, that was one of the like the news, not a have to do, but it's there now. And, uh, so as Nicole told me, she thought there is more potential for more people to use the pool. If, if the heaters work properly and the, uh, you know, the rest of the things that, that make it worthwhile and in place. And I think as much as we can, we need to try to recover the cost based upon the fees people pay to use something. Even though it may not be popular, uh, everybody in town ends up supporting what. Less than ten percent of the population uses, so, you know, they, they need to.
Yeah, cost recovery is really, really difficult.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it would be.
Anyway, as far as the pool, that's my.
Well, the, the, just real quick, we're broad stroke, the, the pool was built in, what, seventy-three? It had heaters in it in the beginning. That's why you had that gas line there that you could tie onto. City Council or city then, if you go back in the records, pulled them out because of the cost. Uh, uh, but I'm not faulting putting them back in. I'm just trying to help if we can get more people involved in those winter swims, it would help cover the cost more.
Yeah, yeah.
That, and, and just managing the temperature for, for everyone.
Well, and, and again, we had our own hiccups, uh, since they're installed. I think if we can get a, a good season where they perform well. And then you will get greater interest, but, uh, last year was not good.
Well, uh, well, there's, there's been, the last couple of years have been pretty interesting down there with all the construction of the, the building and the things like that. Uh, hopefully, uh, while we're talking about that real quick, I don't want to get off on a tangent on that. But do we expect any additional expenses associated with that?
Well, it's funny you should mention it because.
Because that's, that's.
Yeah, I literally, as, as Councilman Lee was talking about, I wanted, that, that occurred to me and I wanted to mention it right now. So it's great to ask questions, cause I was about to, to.
Okay.
So, what, as we're talking about one-time expenses and things you can anticipate and, uh, uses of fund balance. I, I do think it's important to remind you all, and, and for those who weren't on council, to tell you, when the, uh, Community Center project was approved. Our budget for that project, we have one point two million that was basically a grant that the USDA is managing. It was a congressional appropriation, right? Uh, our, our congressman appropriated that money to us. We, uh, the city, our total budget was gonna be one point six five, like one point seven in that range. So the city appropriated its own four hundred and fifty thousand dollar match for the project. So that gives us a total of one point seven for, to build the building. Our lowest cost came in, I think, two point two or two point one. Then we had some discussions about that, negotiated it, and we, we approved, we council approved a contract. For one million, nine hundred and eighty thousand or something like that. So we are over budget. You approved a budget that's over what we, we anticipated. You're gonna spend, we would think, between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars more. Now, when that was approved, if you go back and listen to it, I recall, I think it was Councilman King that was basically saying, okay, we're, we're gonna approve this. But we're gonna work along the way to reduce our cost.
Sure.
And we had some ideas initially about select fill, where to get it and where we could get, and some other things. And we did, we, we reduced some costs in some places. But not two hundred thousand dollars worth. So I think we're still gonna end up, we'll, we'll see where we end up at the end of the day as far as the, the budget, but, um.
So at the end of the day, we're probably, with the grant, total, what's been budgeted, what's overrun. The city's gonna probably be in this building about eight hundred?
Yeah, somewhere in there. Between six and eight.
So what I would ask, what I would ask, and this is along the lines, I want to speak real quick on budget. We, we have been, this council and previous council, we have been making commitments to reserve funds. What I'd like to see is, here's the balance, but I'd like to see what we have encumbered and what's truly available to use.
Well, so just so you know, the.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the fund balance that has been, um, the, the four hundred, your portion of that participation, the four hundred and sixty or so. Is not reflected in your general fund fund balance because it is encumbered and actually has been moved out of that account. In a separate account because USDA required us to do this.
Okay.
So the good news is that's not your general fund, your, your fund balance isn't overstated by that amount. It is overstated by whatever the delta is between our contract price and our budget and whatever that ends up being. And I think that'll be in the one hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand.
But I, my, my question is, I've moved away from that. I'm talking about everything that we've been.
Okay.
Uh, wanting to, these one-time purchases.
Sure.
You need to be keeping that tally so we know how that number's being decreased. Even though it hasn't been spent, it's been encumbered.
Sure.
So we need to know what the, it's kinda like doing your checkbook.
Yep.
How much we still got. So that's my question. Uh, Mr. Marchford, did you have? Yes, sir, please.
I just, you know, you have tennis match. I'm kidding you.
I get to do that.
You do. Um, I do have one question, just out of curiosity, I can't help it. But what is the sweet spot on the temperature of the pool? What's the difference?
That's a three degree thing, right?
Uh, so the sweet spot that we try to keep at is between eighty and eighty-three degrees.
Yeah.
Generally, uh, people want it warmer than that, um, just because the outside temperature is cooler. So they have that wind chill and that outgrowth factor, uh, but that's where we try to keep it at.
So eighty-two?
Eighty to eighty-three in that range. It's a three degree.
Okay, I, I'm just curious.
Yeah, but if it's, you know, forty degrees outside.
It takes a lot more energy.
Eighty feel, well, well, and it just, it's not about the internet, I was just saying, it just doesn't feel, people get in and they're freezing because, yeah, it's cold outside, but.
No, 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 that makes you like working a water leak, makes you get back in the water. You want to be the guy in the water.
The other thing I want to men, remind you all of is part of the thing that we scraped out was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Remember I told you the original bid was two point two something? Well, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we scraped out was the outdoor restrooms and changing areas. And when we talk about utili- utilization of the heated pool, those are really important. And I think, um, I know Councilman King has, has offered and talked about, you know, we should be able to get that done on our own with our own contractors. And do it basically a, a lot cheaper. I still don't think it's gonna be a lot cheaper, but maybe it'll be, won't be two fifty, maybe it's a hundred fifty, I don't know. But that is something that, you know, staff is still, I think everybody involved would still like to see as part of this project. We need those outdoor restrooms and changing areas to make the, the pool more usable. Okay.
Yes, sir, sorry.
No, wait, I'm gonna do.
Okay. Okay, yes, please.
Um, so V C three itself, what do they cost to annualize?
One forty-six, one fifty? We just looked at that contract. I'll, I can give you that number, but it's like one fifty. Yeah, one forty.
And, and this is my first time through this process and it is pretty complicated, I understand that. But we have twenty different checkbooks, five different funds that I created.
Hmm, more funds than that, but sure, it's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot. And so my point is, is when I'm looking through the staff, thank you very much for doing that. Um, being my first time is when we look at streets and that number, I'm looking at salaries, right? But where would I find, what is our executional technical money that we're gonna actually do streets? Where's that number?
Yeah, it's in your streets budget, but it's not very big. I don't want to say it's like eighty grand. You have a, and keep in mind, part of your streets, there's a big chunk of it that's allocated to streets because that's where it belongs. But it's actually the utility expense for the street lights.
Yes.
Um, that shows up in streets and that's like two hundred and forty, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year to, to light our streets. So one of the things that we've been doing, and I know Tom, he's not here, but one of the things that we've talked about with Tom Miller and, and worked on in the past. Is upgrading those streetlights to L E Ds. Now, I've had separate complaints about L E Ds, can we get a different wattage or whatever? But we really basically have one universal fixture that's an L E D, it's a Cobra head. Um, there's not a lot of variability as far as getting a wattage difference, so they're pretty bright. But way less expensive than the, the other types that we use.
Used to, what we used to do, and I don't know if John, if you guys do this, but we used to set a meter on each is for, each different style. One meter on each different style and we counted up, this is how many lights we have for that one, it's how many lights we have for this one. And that's how we determined how much electricity was used for the lights. Okay, it was, it was a very true way, basic way of doing it with the assumption that they're all running the same amount of times and things like that.
I was gonna try to give you that streets number if you wanted it.
Is it on this page, Doc?
Well, probably under supplies. Uh, well, yeah, well, no, there's utilities expenses, a hundred and ten thousand. I said two forty, I, I overpaid that.
Yeah, on, on, for example, the highway, everything but the signal lights or the text dot lights on those signals.
No, you're right, it's on the second page.
City's responsibility.
Yeah, so we just, you know, when we take delivery of, uh, Alstation Oaks, for instance.
Absolutely.
You know, all those lights. So I'm sorry, you're right, you probably were on the right page. Um, when you're looking at streets and under repairs and maintenance, um, your, uh. Street repair maintenance is fifty-five thousand. Oh, sorry, thirty-five thousand. So thirty-five thousand is basically just material. That's, that's pothole filling material, that's about it. There's just not.
It's not enough.
No, well, you just, what, the way we're doing, and this is, I've been working on it for over a year and it's, it takes some time. I, we, we do have a, I just presented a plan to, uh, Lutes and, and, uh, Sitter for them to take to council. To theirs, uh, their commission, um, but it, it's about between one and a half and two miles of, of road. And, you know, my goal would be to try and leverage our relationship with the county to have them go in and through it in our local. Overlay our roads. And if they can do two miles roughly a year, and we could get that going. Then we could repave every ten years, we could have, uh, roadwork done.
Well, let me give, let me give you something on that too, for just open up a discussion that some people may not like to hear. I E, the county commissioner. So years ago, there was a vote placed, precinct two is the only one in the county. That charges an extra fee for roads. They think it's four this year or whatever, but they've been doing it for years and it's to, to be able to do the roads. Uh, I know because I kinda pushed against it because I knew they couldn't do work inside the city. But a lot of people were sold that the county was gonna come to the roads, so they voted for it, it passed. So the citizens, the Castro are paying an extra tax to the county for the roads. That can't be done work inside the city and has been done for several years.
Right.
So, so whether you, the city can, I doubt if you can recapture that. But maybe the city needs to approach to, uh, try to get that to the county on their budget to say, no. City Castro residents shouldn't pay that because we don't gain benefit for it. Now, the argument is it goes to fix the county roads.
Well, but we all pay that county road tax, plus you pay that additional.
It's an additional fee.
I know.
I, I'm only talking about the additional fee.
Right.
The additional fee, the argument is, well, it's to pay the county roads you use. But if you live in country village and basically drive four seventy-one or drive Highway ninety back. Your, usually the county roads are limited, so why are you paying to maintain on, on top of what you're already paying?
I'm a bad example. Cause I drive two seven one pretty frequently as well.
Well, I'm using, I'm just making a comment and example.
Yeah.
The, the city. The city itself, in my opinion, and I know it's argumentative, doesn't get the benefit for that additional tax.
Agreed, um, we, he and I have talked about it and I I've pointed out, it's like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. That that nickel. I think it's a nickel, whatever it is. But I did the math to kinda have that conversation, but as you correctly stated, illegally, they can't do it. And he's, that's, that's kind of, you know, I guess, uh, understandably, that's the, that's what they're leaning on is they can't. But there is a kind of a opportunity for for an interlocal agreement to get some work done. I think the fear from, I know, I know the fear from the county is that, well, if we do that for you, then we're gonna do for all the cities. And I'm like, oh, okay, but that's not my problem, I just need, I need roads done. But to our point, I think Councilman Lee's brought this up before and I know, uh, Councilman, uh, Mers is also stated, like, we want to get. We should be relying on our own street, like, we need to have our own plan and we don't really have one. Now, I, we did present, um, a rejuvenator. I would like to present another group that does something similar, um, it's not a rejuvenator. But they're a, it's a, it's a group that, uh, Hondo's used and it's, they've been used nationally, right?
I'm just making a comment, that component of the property taxes that the property owners in the city of Castro pay. As an addition for road road work can go a long way towards doing straight maintenance in this city.
Oh, agreed, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would. If if we were doing ourselves, the the challenge I have again is if I had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's personnel and time.
Oh, I understand.
For them to do it, because we can go rent the equipment, we've got the skills, they can do the work. The issue is, i- it's all the other work that we're also asking them to do at the same time.
But you, if you had an annual budget of that dedicated just for that. You could, you could work towards that.
On putting it in perspective, Hondo has twelve people.
I understand, but Hondo, Hondo residents do not pay an extra tax to the county. Either.
True. Okay, um, Houston Marshman still has questions.
I'm sorry.
No, it's very interesting. Thank you.
Lunch will be here soon.
So as far as our electric department, are we over?
Electric? Uh, I think we've got our position filled now, right?
Are we, especially the younger guys, you know, that are starting out, are we competitive?
No. I mean, we're competitive enough to get people, we've got some people here, so in that sense, when you look at a market pay. You know, we're, we we were able to get them here, but I stated before, you know, we we can't compete with Medina Electric. With Capital Electric, you know, the the, a private company or with, uh, CPS Energy. And their electric, because we just, they, we, we can't afford to pay our folks as highly as they pay them.
We don't have the customer base and the revenues. You're talking about our neighbors over here have nine hundred and fifty thousand meters. We have twelve hundred.
That that said, that said, though, we are, I mean, really and truly, and I, I remind my employees this all the time. I really want, if they have to go work for one of those, if they have to go work at one of those other companies, because geez, you know, I want more money at home. I want them to regret it. Because they love working with the city of Castro so much and I'm not gonna pretend that every day is just a joy to to work for us. But I really do want this to be a place where people feel like they're part of the family and they're, they have a work-life balance. That's really a a very strong, very good, and it gives them the quality of life they're looking for, even if they're getting the maximum amount of money they're making. And we understand that people are going to leave for better opportunities at some point, um, because that's generally what happens. You know, people will, they'll give you three or four good years here and then they'll go somewhere else. And I, that's just the nature of working in a small town generally. Now, we do have a lot of dedicated employees who worked here for twenty years, right? Um, and, you know, we're very grateful for them.
It's the same thing we've always said is, and I believe this, we want the most qualified people that are willing to work here for what we're here for.
Right, and the PD has the same challenge, you know, we, it just, we are not gonna be, we know that for most of our paid positions, we're not gonna be at the top of market. Or compete at market.
So we try to trade off in other states.
So last question, and again, forgive me, first time through this process, but on the cost of the funds and that. The engineering, we have to see that, I mean, do we have any idea what that's costing?
No.
Where would that be in here?
Yeah, it's not, Phil, that's gonna come, well, I don't know.
It's not a general fund anyway.
Yeah, and I don't, I I don't, I'm not anticipating it to be super expensive, frankly. It's the cost of the rental equipment for the most part, because a lot of that work we're gonna do in-house. What I don't have is the actual plan set to give to, and it won't be a plan set, but at least a drawing or something. And that's something Phil King and I are working on. And it's just, it it's, frankly, it's not su- super high priority right now, because I don't have, I couldn't do it even if he gave it to me tomorrow. Because I've got my folks working on Geneva and they're gonna be doing that until December. Right, I mean, I don't know, we, I mean, really, we put a calendar together and it's. Nah, Daniel, stop talking, it's gonna be longer than that, it will. No, ju- the drainage, the Geneva, I just think, I mean, we, you. We already, we had a month and a half of delay that we didn't expect because of the neighbors and they're, they're back at it, right? We have, we're gonna, that's gonna be on a future council agenda, because they're worried about a road and all this other stuff, so. I'm not gonna, I I think it'll take another two or three months, not because the work takes a long, because the process takes that long. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think that the most valuable asset that any organization has is the people that work for it. It is extremely difficult to replace experience and I think a lot of places undervalue that. I know that we don't have the most competitive salaries, but I was glad to see that the salary increase at least. Increase, outpaces inflation by point one percent. Increases three, which is good, because we've had a few years in the past, well, since I've been watching. That we haven't matched inflation with those, so I was glad to see it at least matched inflation this year. I'm glad to hear that we're closer to a plan on how to keep and maintain our streets. With your, you work with the county. Talking about maintenance more broadly, looking at this unfunded request list, I see twenty-seven thousand in maintenance. That the plan right now is to defer it. And we know that between streets and drainage, there's millions more. In maintenance that's already been deferred and isn't even on the list.
That's actually in the CIP, we're, we're gonna look at some of that.
Okay, well, it's.
Oh, I say in the CIP, it's in this discussion, we're gonna look at some of those too, yeah.
But I, I had expressed an interest in getting that, some of that into the operational budget stuff that could be annualized. And I'm just really worried that we're losing ground on those obligations. When we don't have it in the operational budget or we're adding to our list of deferrals without a specific plan of. And next year, we're gonna raise taxes to do it. Because when we, we don't have a plan and we just keep piling on to the invisible list, when we're balancing the budget by just shifting it into the future. Without a closed form plan, that bill eventually comes due and the lack of that maintenance is noticed. And that, so he said amen, and now I'm gonna say something that makes his friend, his smile turn into a frown, which is that. I still support a proposed tax increase to close that maintenance gap, because I don't think we're gonna do it any other way. Did it, did it work?
No. So I, what we need to, can we pause right there and just talk about what that looks like? So I don't, one of the things that was gonna be the presentation that I didn't think about, or I forgot about, which was the penny, what a penny of, uh, property tax brings in. We're, what's our total property tax revenue?
You bring us, you told us the other day, it's twenty-four K for every penny.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I I knew I'd looked at it. So, um. Depending on the, you know, what you're trying to close, I mean, that's ten cents for two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And I just wanna be kind of realistic about what that looks like and then.
That's ten cents, meaning we go from fifty-two to sixty-two.
That's right, the the other thing you have to think about is the state regulations and when we actually hit a rollback. And I wanna say it's not sixty, ten cents would be too much, I think, though, it's.
It's three percent with nothing, it's up to eight percent with a public hearing or eight subject to rollback.
Right, but I I think, yeah, those, yeah, and then you look at the sixteen pages of of calculations they make you do. And you get, because we have a property tax reduction sales tax and some other things in place, like, we are, the math works out to. I think we can have a rate of point of sixty cents or something like that before it's subject to.
Rollback rate.
Yeah, I, but I have to double check, I need to look at the worksheet, the the latest worksheet. Anyway, so we need to, yeah, that's something else to be aware of, if you're wanting to go up to that limit. Yeah, that's one option, it won't be enough.
I wanna make that jump this year, but I think we need to have a, a plan.
Some kind of plan, yeah.
And I think that includes some degree of tax increase this year.
Yeah, well, what we've been doing and what we had hoped to be able to do is to issue monies in the general fund as and and when we can. To go and do street projects with bond funds. Um, and that's, you know, you did authorize, uh, issuance of bond monies. And you have a list of projects, including streets, that those bond monies could be used for.
But I just wanna reiterate this one more time, David, so just we're clear. In your, in your property tax rates, basically, there's the O and M and there are the INS. And in keeping the rate flat, as you issue more COs for specific projects. You literally lower the monies available for O and M.
That's right.
But by doing more projects, you've increased the cost of O and M. So by issuing debt, you are increasing the cost of O and M, but cutting back on the money that you have available.
What do you mean, what do you mean by increasing the cost of O and M, though?
You can't do a capital improvement without putting aside maintenance money or else you turn around and have a failure in time. And you're back to the same thing, so if you're not ready to pu- put the funds in to maintain it, then you need to think about the capital investment. Okay, it may not be a lot upfront, but you have to make.
Yeah, that's especially true of facilities, you know, the the roads, um, I I would tell you, well, we're already in that.
To a point, is what I'm trying to get at, but, so it's, 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 it's a balance act that we're doing. By doing debt with capital projects, we're literally, in a way, shooting ourselves in the foot. Because we're, we're, we're reducing the amount available for O and M.
Well, to be clear, and.
I I'm just making a general point.
Knows about. I don't think street replacement should be being done on certificates of obligation. I, I think it belongs in operations and maintenance, because it's a foreseeable, regularly recurring expense.
I agree with you, I do agree with you on that.
Voter approval is point five nine five six, so right at sixty cents.
Okay, okay, so we're on the same page. I just wanted to make the point is, that it, it's, it's a lot, there's a lot to it. We, 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 we do this to do these things, but in in some respects, in some respects, we shoot ourselves in the foot on this other side. Which we don't, but it appears that way, so it makes it have to go back for more rate increases.
Well, and it's, uh, I mean, again, y'all are, y'all, y'all are in the unenviable position of having to decide some of these priorities. Because at the same time, uh, you know, we've got some operational increases that we talked about. From the ten, the standpoint of needing additional parks folks, needing a a detective in the police department, some other places. That if we had the, if you're gonna go raise taxes, would you then do it for street? Would streets be the most important thing and you go spend that tax money on streets? Or would you go, go invest in the detective in the police department? Or would you go hire another person to park, or would you try to do all three and just, you know?
When you turn around, David, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you turn around and you, your, your return is basically twenty-four thousand on every penny. I'm not saying walk away from that, what I'm saying is. With the cost of everything, you don't get a whole lot of bang for your buck for, for two hundred grand.
That's right.
So, and and that's a hefty increase. And I'm not saying you, you don't, you don't walk away from it, because anything's better than nothing, it moves you forward. But at the same token, I don't want somebody to have a, a thought process that the, the. Ten percent tax increase, for example, may not get you as much as you think it gets. For example, I'm just using that as a thought.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was trying to say, yeah, two hundred and forty thousand dollars didn't go very far, frankly.
Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
I, I kinda said what I wanted to say and I, I came here to be in that unenviable position.
Well, no, no, I, you're not getting an argument here. Anybody else have a comment on that? Okay, Mr. Lee.
A disclaimer before I speak, I have an unusual sense of humor. And I also tend to be very dramatic in my examples, just because I've forgotten all the kind words I can say in your place. Anyway, to me, uh, we have enough income in the general fund in your streets. We've chosen to spend that money on other things, okay, that's what we chose to do. And like the question first said, we keep kicking this thing down the road, we just keep doing it. We keep talking about, I would like to do it, but we never do it, okay, and then we're gonna borrow money to do it. As the mayor said, we need, this needs to be a continued maintenance thing, we need to keep it up, okay? And so, do you wanna make hard decisions and do the have to do's, or do you wanna keep doing the other the like to do's? And so somewhere in there is a balance. About fifteen or so years ago, I got with Sitter when we pushed that into office. When things were a little bit easier, we started doing cold overlays, some of those cold overlays are still in place after fifteen years. Okay, and at the time, it was seventeen thousand dollars per mile to do that. And we did a few streets and council kept going, eh, I don't want to spend that money. Several months ago, we had a, a presentation made on, had been a motion to be put over the streets, probably, you know, soaked up. And with this stuff, and then, uh, brought another proposal to put actual, a, a coating over that was thicker. Fill the cracks and so forth. Drive around town, the streets are cracking everywhere, okay, they're cracking everywhere. And so, the longer we kick this down the road, they're gonna start falling apart, the grass is gonna creep more and more into this thing. So, oh my gosh, we gotta do something, we have an opportunity to do something now, we have an opportunity now to do something. And I'm, I'm in agreement, borrowing money to do regular maintenance is, is like borrowing money to buy groceries, that's not a good idea. And you know what, that little saying, you're crazy if you make, you have sent that old car we're giving to. So it's not happening, it's just not happening. Uh, now, onto my. Put this list. And by the way, two hundred thousand doesn't do much, but it does more than none thousands.
That's correct.
So if, if, if we're gonna chip away at this problem, we're gonna have to do something about it. I'm a hundred percent in favor of cost of living, you know, and we need to actually settle some stuff with the general fund stuff today. Versus coming back again and going through all this over again.
That's our hope.
Well, nobody's agreed on anything yet. And so we're still keeping it out there. I am absolutely in favor of cost of living increases. I had sent, I don't know if everybody, what it costs to live in the state of Texas. And we're underpaying people at the starting salaries unless, it says right here, living wage with no children by yourself, twenty-one, maybe two and a half. I think it's something twenty-eight hours a year.
Yeah, generally, the people who are under that are gonna be admin assistants and, um, our apprentices are in that.
All right, if they're full-time employees, we need to do our best to pay living wage. Now, this doesn't say whether, uh, retirement, health insurance and the rest of those things are in that figure or not. It doesn't say, you know, it doesn't say. And so if we're up to the point of then receiving that, then okay, but I get the impression when we're not, you want to use that, well, go. That we really can't pay enough and we, you heard me say, we pay up the prices exactly with the situation years ago with the police. When they were making less than twenty thousand dollars a year, yeah, cost of less to live in. And finally, we got smart and said, we can't turn into a training program here, it just, it's killing us. Well, it looks to me like we're doing the same thing right now with our electrician apprentices and some others that are, you know, are just getting their teeth are getting by. And so I think we seriously need to consider paying those people, so they'll stay real enough to give us some return. On the time we've invested in the money, and so we're not on that particular point in the budget at this point, but, uh. I, I think we need to consider that, so pay raise, absolutely. I would get away with all new hires, every one of them, every new hire that's on the program, I'm sorry, China, but that would include the police. We're really not that much bigger yet than we have been five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. We are getting bigger, true, but we have increased our cost to operate this city, obviously, cost of living gone up. With people and so forth, pretty significantly in the last ten, fifteen years. We're really not a whole lot bigger than we were, so, uh, you know, extra animal control, extra police, canine, extra park person. My vote is no, we need to put that effort into fixing our streets, okay, and maintaining our facilities. I would reduce the and for anybody in the room that can hear me, I'm not recommending we let anybody go, okay? That we reduce some of the funds spent on some, some like to do's, nice to do's, all those. It hits my, my, uh, my key here is tourism, economic development. Not a salary issue, but the amount of money we fund otherwise. This is a nice to do. If we get a return on it, but I doubt we get over two hundred thousand dollars a year return on it. And so I sent some information out to some of you. One of the requirements, I'm sorry, one of the expectations of the Chamber of Commerce, by the National Chamber of Commerce organization is tourism and economic development, okay? They don't do that here. That doesn't mean they shouldn't do that here, but we have taken on some of the pride, believe it's their responsibility. We're a very small town. We've got thirty-five hundred people, but we're spending a good amount of money to try to bring people to town. And I want to bring people to town, even though I'm not a big fan of tourism in some regards, because you get up in town eventually, but uh, I think that they have some, some, some cutbacks and put that money for street maintenance, building maintenance, that kind of stuff. Nippon technology, I don't know when the, I don't know the contract runs out, but you know, we were, we used to pay about sixty thousand a year and now we're paying a couple hundred thousand a year for his commission. I, I hope I'm around physically and on council and if you're fans, uh, coming back up for a bit, but I would say we need to look at other options to reduce that cost, see that maybe it can happen, but at least take a look at it. I am in favor of more people in gas parking, absolutely. I'm talking about the people there. And if we have people that do street and facility maintenance specifically. Now, I do know that street people in the general fund, obviously work on playing electrical, water, sewer. Okay, there's, there's a mix and it shows in the thing. Some of those are paid out of different departments, but we definitely need to take care of our facilities and, uh, and our gas parking. Citizens decided they wanted a gas department, so we're responsible to do it. And I look at the rates that you provided in here. Actually, I think our utility rates are pretty damn cheap for gas.
Are you planning on leaving?
Yes.
Well, I'm just saying, cause we're, you're getting out of general fund. Did you wanna try and cover everything on your list or?
No, sir.
Okay, okay.
Continue.
Yeah, yeah.
Library needs security cameras. They, they were complaining about no security out there. I'm in favor of the things on the, uh, the proposed library as far as technology items. I would not spend a hundred and seven thousand dollars to digitize at this point. I would see as an index of what we already can. Because then we can go look at that and find out what documentation we have and do some stuff. I am concerned about the dramatic increase in court costs unless every bit of that court cost is offset by the revenue.
It is, it is.
And because we used to have two courts a month here, which we did. We did, we did for a short period of time. She probably knows, okay? But we had this discussion, we had too many people. Or I just threw up a few times a day, you know, because we had some of the.
We still do, but we do it twice a month.
So we do that longer if there's ever so many, but you know, our, our cost.
So the cost, that's one of the things I think I explained before. I may have underestimated the amount of court revenue that we're getting, cause it, but the revenue, the expenditure that the increase in expenditure is offset by the estimated revenue that we should get next year. Certainly this current year, we're gonna be in the black by a considerable amount. It's a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than what we, it's cost us to run the court.
Okay, I know with that change in police department operations, we've gone through this cycle a number of times. We put more effort into community policing, less on the highway and then more on the highway, less at other places. So we hiked up to the point where we were looking at how many people we should have and what we did and so forth. And so.
So they're still doing.
People will still free, absolutely not, but you know, what's the right balance?
Well, I just want to remind you, so a lot of the, if you weren't aware, you may not be aware, um, the highway patrolling that you're seeing taking place, most of that expense, there's some of that will, that will be training, you know, initial training that you're doing with somebody that they have to do a certain number of stops and be trained on that. But, uh, most of what you're seeing is actually being paid through, paid for through the Stone Garden Grant. So we are, we are part of the Uvalde, uh, state policing grant program. And that pays for overtime for officers to work Highway ninety. So the reason you're seeing that workout on Highway ninety, most of the time, those are officers that are actually getting paid for by that grant, not by our. It's renewable, uh, each year and I, who knows, right? Who knows? But that's only paying for overtime. So it's not like we would leave an, if that grant goes away, our ability to go and, um, do work on ninety still exists. We just would do less of it because we wouldn't have the overtime hours to, to pay people overtime to do that.
You know me, I don't trust programs to grants. I think that's what it's making.
Well, I, I like to get all the free money I can, but.
Well, I understand, but you don't, you can't plan to run an organization in grants because you don't have to get it.
And that's why I wanna, that's why I wanna clarify, operationally, yes, operationally, um, our operations continue to, to be able to, to pay for themselves. Now, uh, with that, we also applied for a cops grant, which is the personnel grant. That is an operational expense that will go away, that we're expected to take on. And we purposely, we, we initially started looking at it three years ago. We only accepted it last year in part because we were trying to time it with the growth that we're anticipating the city so that as that new value comes on, we have the, the revenue to pay for those positions. And it looks like that's the way that's playing out. That's how we kind of orchestrated it.
Right, you already were thinking on facilities and streets. You've got to maintain what is ours. Otherwise, you're not good stewards of what's been entrusted to us. And the RV park, uh, of course, I, I said how I'm paying three, three guys about maybe looking at building in the city all of it, but I don't know. The RV park doesn't essentially serve the citizens of Castroville. It's for people that come to Castroville. So how much money do I wanna put into that to serve somebody else?
Well, I, I'm gonna, the, just to clarify though, the way it serves the citizens is in bringing revenue to the park to offset the cost of park operations. The RV revenue is not insignificant. Me, meaning it, the cost to operate the RV park is whatever it is, thirty or forty thousand dollars a year. And the revenue we bring in is like a hundred and fifty. So there's an offsetting revenue that benefits, that offsets the subsidy that would occur in parks because they're, I know you don't believe them, but they're real. Yeah, I'll show them to you.
We have done this before. We've been getting revenue from the RV park.
Yeah, someone was stealing from.
The, the profit over cost was around forty thousand dollars. We've got no news lines beyond that point and our rates haven't gone up since then. Don't show to me now.
I think someone was stealing from you. I think that's what was.
All I'm saying is that we need to invest money in the citizens, the streets that the cities could have right now. And since I don't want this element to shoot me, I'm not gonna say anything about it in other, other categories. I would say we spent much on the fireworks and music festivals this year.
The city's contribution, the, so the way the Fourth of July runs, it's, it's done by committee, uh, cooperation with the chamber and the CAEDC. The city puts in its portion and then fundraising takes care of the rest of it. Our portion, I think, was fifteen grand.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen?
City put sixteen into that?
Mm-hmm, that's for the fire. So we, the city sponsors the fireworks. The music and entertainment and any other costs are sponsored by that.
General fund funded that, the sixteen K?
The city council did, yeah.
This, the general fund?
Yeah, it is, yes. Yeah, and that's, we, y'all have done that for the last, I don't know how many years.
It's been long. It used to be a better display than it is now.
Well, that didn't cover the entire cost. There's a large jump to cost fireworks over last year. Um, so the operation went way up on what they expected. You know, send a guy back out who would sign up to do it. And he's gonna do the fireworks and he got a better show than Austin, Texas, he jumped to. And so we were kind of scrambling there. And so that, some of that cost was based on cost entries, based on what they thought was gonna happen with terrorists. And then the other part is we had a guy that was supposed to do it and he bailed on us. And so we had to kind of scramble to get the show done and to get what, and so we didn't, we had to kind of balance, like we have to have the show. And that's, so some of that extra cost comes from.
But the sixteen K is what the city put in.
The city pays. No, no, I understand that.
In the past, we were able to cover the entire cost, but it sounds like the cost.
We just started doing this about twelve or thirteen years ago and we didn't have anything in the park. His anthill was built and donated to the city. But it, you know, it's, it's another nickel in the bag that we spent on the general fund that gives us.
You don't wanna have fireworks?
I love it. Two or three hours of entertainment for sixteen or twenty thousand dollars. Plus the staff providing, putting things in position and I was like, I'm just saying, you're paying for a high, don't get me wrong. I love the Fourth of July. But should we do it every year or maybe go every other year? Every, every ten thousand, we say, just ten thousand we can put into stuff that serves everybody in the community. And not just a short period of time. And don't say Bob Lee hates the Fourth of July.
Yeah, you're un-American.
We don't have to.
But it's about, you know, it is hard to watch because it's about twelve hundred dollars a minute for a show.
What's not in, uh, in here, and it was gonna be on the agenda at the last meeting. And, uh, because it was gonna be a law, but I asked the mayor to live another item off. I'll mention it right this moment is, uh, the airport hasn't gotten due payment for its ball field property as required by the FAA in at least twenty years, okay? At least twenty years.
Are we now talking about that in the budget?
Yes, we are.
Your general funds?
Yes, we are gonna talk about it because somebody in one of the funds is gonna pay the airport for the fair market value of the land, okay? Somebody's gonna pay that as required by the FAA.
Well, you keep saying required by FAA, but keep in mind, we had an audit. They accepted our proposal that our maintenance of the airport well was in-kind services that was acceptable to them. So we've met the FAA requirement. However, in discussions you and I have had afterwards, it's clear, number one, that that, that the maintenance of the airport really benefits the system, not the airport at all, that there are other ways to do that, that, I mean, I'm not gonna argue those points. But if you're just gonna keep saying that, well, as required by the FAA, no, the FAA was good. We had an audit, we passed. They, they're, they're good with our explanation. If you want to do something different, that's fine. But it's not required by the FAA. We've met their, their requirement.
I think we established that what we used, and this is in the package, what we used to show as an offset really was not the airport responsible at all. It was the city utility fund as confirmed by the mayor, who was the.
You can make that argument, but again, if you're gonna say the FAA requires us to do it, that's not true. They, we've passed the audit. We're good.
Argument with me, I'm telling you that when we bring this up in the next council meeting and get into a discussion about it, we need to look at compensation to the airport for the ball field land, okay? And that's what I'm saying, there's gonna probably be a spot within this budget that, that we're gonna have to come up with. Probably somewhere between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars. I'm done. Everybody clap.
All right, well, I'm gonna go through a few things really quick.
We're, I think, ready to break for lunch.
Well, I'm trying to see if it's here.
Want to see if it, you wanna, is it here?
I don't know. Nobody answered me.
Okay, because I can even talk before lunch and we can have.
We may need a restroom break.
Okay, I'll tell you what.
All right.
It's, uh, what is it? Four minutes till one? You're waiting for a call. Let's, let's have, cause I'd really like to work through lunch, that we can grab something.
Maybe a ten minute recess.
But let's take about till, let's come back at one-ten. One-ten, and it's currently right now, recess is twelve fifty-seven and we'll come back at one-ten.
We hope it's here.
Okay?
Twelve fifty-seven is when you broke? I give up. I, I fixed two people and can't get anybody to answer me back there. I think it is here. It's back there.
Okay, go figure.
The live stream is still on.
The live stream is still on.
So I think there's probably another.
No, no, I'm talking about this.
Hi folks. Enjoy this one. That was a cheap one. I'm good.
I can't believe all this stuff, but I'm being so loud. That kid has eight acres wide down on him, he's so worried. So I know. He's something to, to give life. Yeah. Oh no, so, but he's a.
It happened like it all day.
Yeah, he's that always. So he's all fed up. He's gonna be like school for this year, so. It's really, it's.
See you. I gave her an email. Yes. I'm gonna start that.
Wait.
I knew it was.
Yeah, okay.
I stayed, I saw that.
Okay, I'll keep an eye out for it.
Cause if we don't, if we don't see you, I'm gonna slap her out. Uh, they didn't even. They say like, I remember this guy called. Start here.
Yeah.
And so I was like, oh, that's a good show. I will hang up on you.
Ah, okay.
Start here.
Yeah, well, they made fun. You know this, they lost. Probably looked at my email, searched me directly, happened to discover and here it comes. Yeah.
So, you know, I just wanted to follow up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep an eye out for it.
Okay. How's it going?
All right, how are you?
You doing okay?
Yeah, I had surgery done for a clean state, so.
And what's the recovery kind of looking like?
Uh.
Already, you're already on the cow, Marty, or what do you mean?
Oh, no. That's why I'm not walking. Well, I had a delay popped up here. Uh, they said, uh, no being on the lake no more than an hour a day.
Yeah. That's what they do. It's like a very.
Exactly. And then I'm in a cast from at home and sleeping. And that, so. Yeah.
It's good to you.
No motorin' for two weeks, uh, so I'm pretty focused, but here's, uh, no progress until I go home.
Well, glad to hear.
Oh, yeah.
Glad to hear, so.
Yeah. Oh no, I was gonna be here.
Yeah.
It's slow.
Well, it's good to see you.
It's all right.
Okay. The back business is there. Got a little chow, move on. I'm good. Go get you something. Before Bob Lee takes it off. You know. You know.
And I said, listen, we need to get that session. I grew up, and I know that, and I love, love people, and that's it.
Yes, sir, I do, yes, sir.
You made it without them.
Exactly, yes, sir.
It's the way we were brought up.
Exactly, sir, yes, sir.
I know, I was hoping.
Okay. Got a cold one. It's okay. So. The livestream's on.
Oh, thank you.
That's what I been talking.
It, it is, I checked there.
Okay. So the words.
It's working. So when did you write that? Yesterday.
Which one?
The one that says, I don't care what it is, I'm against it.
Oh.
I wrote hard Houston at the bottom, but it just felt like it belonged on.
I remember that somewhere along the lines, I've heard people say that.
I want a T-shirt to sell. Something for it.
Wow. Well, he told me that the other night.
What? Sometimes I say things I don't remember, so.
That's a good thing. But I will tell you this, I did tell David this, and I may get it wrong, so I'm sure I'll get corrected if I am. It's a joke. I just remember, we're all the same team. And sometimes we agree to disagree.
Right.
And sometimes the agreements get a little tou- touchy, but in the end, we do what we believe is in the best interest of the city.
Exactly.
Move on. So I want to ask you a question. I'm waiting for somebody to ask me if I'm going to write a little thing for you on Facebook. Nobody, nobody has asked me that. Nobody has asked me that. But I have been asked by people, I have been asked by people, are you ever going to put anything out there? And I'm waiting for somebody who ever doing that to ask me. I don't, I don't want to push. And I'm not saying I have a lot to say. But. Just thought I'd plant that seed.
Did you want something to drink?
Oh, I got my tea.
Did you need a filler or anything?
Oh, no.
No, David, I did do that yesterday also. When San Jose State, if I would just spend in Bethlehem. As the mayor, and I said, I know the person will be the first to come.
What do you think about, uh, he needs some help, bro?
Build a new, new city, won't he?
Yeah, usually. I was saying, uh, there could be a little bit.
I've been, I had surgery on Wednesday, so that's why I'm.
I said, you know, we've got eleven or twelve million dollars in the budget to place the park and redo this building.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff. And I was going to take the public works yard and move that facility down to the RV park. Build a new city hall at RV Park Lotte, and that's done. Give this to the police department, elaborate it. And, uh, we've got to look at putting, uh, public works, how do they, non-aviation area of the airport?
Yeah.
Because it's already, it's already been told from my industrial by the FAA.
Yeah.
So we could use that, we don't have to buy any land anywhere.
Yeah.
Pays care of people in the mean. Even if RV park, you got that little rec center there that can be, help them transition, that's a good building over there. There's plenty of space there. Or you could even leave the other RV park outside or if you wanted to, or even maybe a robe inside there, but. Zoom over there, just filling out already, it's an. Council chambers are not big enough.
Yeah.
So, why not instead of spending three to five days already on this building, only build a new building, you got to keep this building.
Yeah.
And put another, another item.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
But now's the time because we've got this contract thing supposedly, we'll be able to design and build.
Yeah.
Well, you go ahead and start, you've got three or four of them.
Uh, I've got four.
Somebody work on time. I'll have some on the floor. We need some consensus on some of these items. You know, you want to pick all this. Amen, brother. Well, let's see if that mayor, he just, he just takes everybody's time. Somebody else's time to talk, and the mayor just jump right in.
Of course. He just drop, jump right in.
I don't order to do that, guy. Anyway, can we, uh, try to reach some consensus on some of these?
Never heard of my papers. Wish you would have. Then I can tell you all, pop those yourselves.
You're talking about?
We're still live.
You're talking about spending, okay? You're talking about spending money on streets because of the county tax? It's kind of like people with dumb kids saying, why do I have to give to the school district in my tax bill?
No, this, this tax was set up as an extra tax, so you don't have to pay for your own. And there are only five percent of children right there, so which, where is the big tax at?
Really? I'll put it all over.
Also, he only applies everything to. Why would I say city, I don't have to pay yet for tax, they don't.
Interesting.
City, your body doesn't pay yet for tax.
The lady that's in charge of this, uh, she's a county person, three-two, I think. I guess two, she retired from the Texas.
Just, uh, cap, capital.
She was everything under the sun about the street. That's why I talked to her after we had this comment before about, well, actually before we had, she gave the frozen con, different thing, but she didn't sound like a fan of this. Ben Spry on stuff that they were proposing.
Very awful.
Nick, we're beyond that. You know, we used to have a breaker that came along and cleaned up the edge of the streets. And we rented a, we had a contract to do the streets with it.
Yep.
And, uh, I'm, I'm real near about my expensive pieces of specialized equipment or things that we sell to users. Is this when we reestablished a, a street park here, did the one road across? And then we, then we got out of the business, and we got trouble finding operators that's qualified. It's a tiny old. I'll, I'll, I'll date it to this day.
All right, come up here. Larry? We're going to call this meeting back to order at one-twelve P M. I know that's on the recording, so even though we may not have a city secretary present, we do have quorum. So we're going to call the meeting back together. I already announced the time.
Great.
Now. Thank you all for all your comments, now I'm going to make a few, more than what I did earlier. Hold on to it, folks, hold on to this. Leroy, single audit, is it because you're getting grants?
He already, he already read us back in.
I know, but my reporting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Back in, it's one-twelve P M, are you on now?
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Single audit, you don't do a single audit regularly?
No.
Right? You will this next year? So you didn't do one before, but you will this one because of the building down there? The federal funds and the CDBG grant too, right? Okay, well, you're going to have that with, with the, okay, I just thought I'd ask that, okay? Cloud-based, are you moving your stuff to cloud-based? I think we talked before.
We talked about it after updating the vote, forty plus thousand.
I see that forty-one, it's still, it, that's on the, that's on the want to do. Okay, but the single audit's a requirement. Have you, do you anticipate?
If adopt a different community center, it's a lot of free. We'll see how much we can do that. Keep that threshold. Requiring some audit if not.
So we either budget for it or we don't, and we come back and amend the budget if needed? Thought I'd ask that.
The single audit expense is not significant, though.
No, no, well, I'm, I'm, well. Do you, do you spread that out too, or just spread out the regular audit? Spread it, okay. How much do you chart, how much is total audit, the services for this?
Yeah, twenty-five?
Forty-five, okay, just, just out of curiosity, thought I'd ask that. Okay. Let's go right down my list and just tell you all really quick, like I told you before. Here we go. I don't believe, I believe, and I don't know, you may have already done it. I don't support line items for anything of special activities. I think all of that money needs to be recovered from every department, put it under admin, and anybody that wants a special activity needs to go through the city administrator, who's the responsible part of the council. So every fund that has a special activity amount in it, I think they should be pulled out and put all under admin and then considered about that. Huh? Well, I don't know, I haven't looked at the new general fund budget, but like, for example, economic and tourism has a special activities fund that may have paid for that Fourth of July, but I think it all should come under administration, city count, all of it. Because I think, I think just like we did the last time when we did somebody, uh, uh, either doing a grant or doing a, uh, uh, proclamation or, or what we did, a donation or something, that all should come before city council. I don't, I, I have a question about vehicle allowances. How many, how many?
Scott, back up and ask for clarification there, so.
Yeah.
What you're asking is to put.
Every fund that has special activities lined on them, take them out of those funds and re, relook at them and put as a total through administration. So for example, instead of five grand here, ten grand there, thirty grand there, put it all under there as a group thing, and then define what you consider as special activities.
But do you want the, it sounded to me like you also wanted to make sure that when those things come forward, that they come forward for council approval?
I use that as an example for like if we're doing a, uh, a donation to somebody, but they don't necessarily have to because you'll bring them in a report.
That's what I was going to say, because if they're in the budget and identified in the bu, that's what I wanted to clarify. So if they're in the budget, you want them to put in one location and then also identify what those expenditures would be.
Yeah, because can I, can I ask you?
And then they'll be in the budget.
Do. And maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Does every time somebody accesses that fund, does, does the council, wherever, what was the special activity? They should be, that's my opinion.
Okay.
On, uh, vehicle allowances. How many staff members have vehicles and how many staff members take those vehicles home?
Take up.
Other than the police department?
Yeah, I'll get you a number, even PD doesn't, there's, there's only a couple of vehicles in the PD there take home, we don't, they don't all take.
I know, it was right, right next to my office on Fourth Saturday one.
Yeah, they're, they're fleet vehicles for the most part. Beyond that, there's only a handful that are actually take home. I think we've got a couple of our superintendents in each department for on-call, so if you're in an on-call position, you may have a vehicle for that while you're on on-call.
I got it.
And then there's a couple of positions I'll have to go look that are actually taking it home, but for the most part, we don't have take-home vehicles.
Okay, I was just curious, so the vi, the, huh, so then the other side of the coin is vehicle allowances. Why do we provide vehicle allowances if it's only a vehicle for work? Or, or, you know, if some people just have a vehicle, I'm not talking about you, you have a contract, but nobody else has a contract. And why do we have vehicle allowances, just like I, I'm going to say the same thing, I'm back to the phones.
Yeah.
A phone allowance versus a, a city, does the police department, the police officers use your own personal phone or do they have cell phones issued to them?
Do you use our own? We have two cell phones in the department, where we're on shift.
Uh-huh.
I have one, the chief has one. And the other sergeant has a full sergeant.
Oh, I re, I renew my issue on that, on, on the city business being conducted on a personal phone. I'm not here to talk about your, Scott, you have a contract, I'm here about everyone else.
I'll speak up on mine.
Yeah. Okay.
I've had a car allowance from this city for eighteen years.
Okay.
Because I do go and do errands for the city.
Do you turn mileage in too?
No.
Okay, good.
I get a set amount and I go and say pick up supplies, that type of thing.
I understand that.
Mr. Painter gave it to me, my phone allowance, uh, of course, is for, uh, city, uh, business.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, it, it's a partial amount of what my true phone.
Okay.
It's not a full pay.
I just wanted to ask because, because, for example, like, uh, um, um. I'm going to use the term again, government, uh, state of Texas to, uh, give, whatever. Cell phones, the cellphone that I carry, for example, does everything I want to do, and it's forty dollars a month, and it's an iPhone. And sometimes a issued phone is less than a phone allowance. Just thought I'd ask that, okay? I just thought I'd ask that. The other one, uh, I'm a level funded guy, guy. Uh, I understand the, some of the improvements needed. I'm, I, I would propose level funding in the admin, level funding in the parks, which includes the pool in the RV, level funding in the library, with the exception of I would do the maintenance things on the library that's posed for that, because they need the security, they need the, the door, they need some things. The streets, I would obviously add more, community development. I'm going to ask you the question on the community development. Are our rates high enough to justify, to pay not only the cost of providing the service, but also to collect an admin fee to pay for your services within permitting? If not, we maybe can consider that.
Yeah.
Because things need to be, maybe we need to increase, and I, I'm talking a different thing, the admin fee to cover the cost of you. Okay, so, so it should be fully funded. I, I believe that.
We added a position last year, um, last year, right, Megan, last year? And, uh, part of the justification was that because we, one, had enough work.
Sure.
Two, basically, that's been a break even, so that position's a hundred percent covered, and it handles pretty much all the permitting, uh, aspects of it. Now, not to say Biondo doesn't do any aspect of that, but we do collect more, we do have an admin fee.
Okay.
We do collect, um, more than probably what it costs us by a small margin.
Okay, more than one, one person, and, and I don't want to get in this beat back forth, but we have to have talks about this. But more than one person has been my ear, another one yesterday for a long time, about the quality of services provided through building inspections. Literally, the, out, the, the, they perceive the inexperience. You had a building inspector on a new house that looked right at a contractor and says, you make a list of what they do, and you call me when it's done and I'll inspect it. That's not the way we do inspections, that's not the way this should be.
So this would have been SafeBuild?
This was, this was just happening.
Bureau Veritas? Yeah, I know.
So I just wanted to make sure that we're getting what we're paying for.
Sure.
What people are getting for, because you know, there's a process, you know, rough in of framing or this and that. There's, there's inspections through the process.
Yeah.
It's not, it's, 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 when an inspector says, you just keep track of it, call me when it's done, I'll come look at it when it's finished. That's unacceptable. So I wanted to bring that up to you.
Yeah, I've never heard that before, so I'd like to use it, and I'd love to talk with the builders, so if this school is on site, because there's multiple factors that goes on site, you don't know.
I, I don't want to disparage anybody with the definition on who it was, but I could talk to you about that.
Yeah, please do.
Yesterday I got hit, but that one's pretty good, too.
Yeah, we use third-party, that's the first I've heard of an issue like that. Um, but definitely if that's happening, we want to know about it.
I just want to make sure we're doing contract services, we're getting what the people are paying for, the fees and things like that. And I want to make sure we cover all the costs, okay? So, uh, code enforcement, I know the chief's not here, but I'm very excited about, what is this? Okay, yes, uh, about, I'm all about code enforcement, I've said that from the start, I think we need to do, I think you've got, they've done great. But I'm confused about code enforcement, animal control being basically the one and the same. I think we need a full-time code enforcement officer, and I think we need a full-time animal control officer. Now, whether they cross paths or whatever, but I think there's enough to justify that on each one dedicated to those particular assignments.
Yeah, I spoke to, at the last budget workshop and I agree with you. When we, when we made the, that decision to dual train, there wasn't enough work.
Okay.
But now our, our animal services is doing such a good job, like we need probably two and a half people just doing animal services. And then code compliance, you need at least one, maybe two, I mean, but at the time we did it, there really wasn't, it wasn't a full person job all the time, but I think we're there.
Okay, as long as they're on a, on the, on the PD. Sir.
On code, there was a time that we've gone in this cycle, police were doing code, or some code, it was easy to spot as they did neighborhood patrol. It's kind of a bit difficult, so people wanted to see police cars near their neighbors, especially if they drive, they really didn't connect for seventy point nine, those types of things. So there were things that the police could easily spot, vehicle, trash, all that kind of stuff, which makes it, you know, some worse with this. So that took some workload off the enforcement specifically dedicated to go look, supposedly police should be through every street in town, just do it every day or at least a couple of weeks.
And, and, and I, I got it, I just wanna make a comment too that, uh, I'm not, I'm not gonna deal with a police officer except the fact on code enforcement. The use of title of code enforcement officer is kinda like using the title of a police officer or an attorney or an engineer. If you don't have the credentials, it's against the law to do though. So if you are rec, you are recognized as a code enforcement officer, you must have the credentials to be a code enforcement officer. Just like a police officer, engineer, whatever, you have to have those credentials. I'm sure they do, they said they do, I just wanna make sure, which, um, the last one I wanna make a comment about is the economic development, folks. Uh, I don't wanna sound ugly or rude, but I really don't think that department's needed. I think it could be used in other things, I think that money can be used towards the streets. Uh, in March of twenty-two, when that creation was, uh, position was created, it wasn't necessarily a cr, a position that was pushed, but yet the person that sat in my chair pushed it and it was approved. At a certain level, uh, I believe that that position, and I've heard from multiple people, and maybe it's the directive that this position has, but it works more with the economic development of this downtown area. And one thing I got hammered yesterday is there's other parts of the city on the other side of town that really don't get taken care of as much as others do. So I think, I think along those lines, that's more of a chamber issue. We talked about the chamber, uh, twenty years ago. The chamber did tourism, the chamber did economic development, the chamber did it, we had a very active chamber. The Chamber of Commerce paid for all the lights on Highway ninety, a lot of people don't know that. The Chamber of Commerce paid to build the ball fields, a big chunk of them at the airport, a lot of people don't know that. Because they, they, they made fundraisers for the veteran of the community based on their economic development activities and their, uh, tourism. The city used to always give them all their hot tax in funding that. There became some issues back and forth about what they can and can't use the hot tax on. It's a two-part thing, one, number one, if it promotes beds, people in beds, tourism. Number two, there's a ninth thing, list on where it can be funded. And contracting with the Chamber of Commerce for tourism is in fact the use of the hot tax according to Texas Municipal League. And, and so I just wanna.
It depends on how the chamber uses it, you can't just give the money.
It depends on how they use it, they have to use it within these things. So for example, fireworks is an unauthorized use.
Right.
But yet if you have an event that promotes somebody to spend the night, that is unauthorized use. So it's, it's all in how you do it, but it, you can contract with the chamber as long as you have spec guidelines on what the chamber uses. That's my opinion, that's the way it should be, the funds we put in that should, we can move to a street.
Can I speak to that real quick?
Opinion.
Uh, and. Can I, can I speak to that real quick?
Sure you can.
Cause I, I just wanna, for the rest of the council, I understand, I got some work to do with you on proving up the economic benefit of the investment. But I think we have demonstrable results from having this position. And I think the city would be shooting itself in the foot, cutting its nose off to spite its face, you can think of any other analogy you want. If you did away with that position, because you need tourism and I think the city has benefited directly from that investment. And I think we're, we're paying more than, I, I know Bob Lee was talking about, you know, are you covering your expense? I, I believe a hundred percent that we can show you that and I can show you that in the terms of sales tax. As far as people feeling slighted because the downtown businesses are getting more attention, the fact of the matter is we do work for, for, uh, businesses across the city. It's not just the downtown, sometimes the perception may be that, but the fact of the matter is that the downtown core is the area that needs a lot of work, right? Because those are the businesses that generally suffer and are not doing, like we have to drive people there. Folks out on ninety don't need as much of our love and attention because they're getting that walk-in business.
There are downtown core businesses that are not specifically tied to this Elsis district that do not get the attention. And I can name the businesses and bring them into you that come to me and say they're excluded from certain things.
Oh, please do.
They're not excluded.
Yeah, please do.
So, so I don't agree with that, I believe it's tailor-made for certain areas.
Uh, well, that's wrong, that's, that's not true. And people are telling, yeah, I get it.
That's the impression that's out there.
Right, so we need to, we need to correct that, that's what I'm telling you, we got some work to do, but I, I would just say we, we make an effort to work with all the businesses. And no one's being excluded because.
But I was pretty clear from the first day I came in, when I asked the question, we have literally four economic drivers around here.
Yeah.
Wha, what, how do they match up, how do they work together? I asked the same question to the chamber. And I basically got their back turned to me and then when I told them what the chamber used to do, it's kinda like, oh. And I said, well, we need to try to work to get back more involvement with the chamber.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm just giving you my opinion.
I get it.
And, and we move on.
Yep.
Okay, uh, on the cola. It's not that I don't agree with getting everybody an increase. But I agree with what Honda's approach was when they approved their budget the other night. It's three percent merit based on performance evaluations from each department. So it's not an automatic, it's a merit-based.
Yeah, merit, merit-based takes, and we've talked some about that.
But it, but, but it's merit-based based on departments. I, now, it's very possible that every department says, everybody's so great, they get the full three, and I'm okay with that. But it makes them have to do a performance evaluation just for.
Well, we do performance value, valuations across the board anyway.
Sure.
But I, I would just tell you, tying pay increases to those evaluations gets problematic very quickly. Because it ends up ca- causing more morale issues than any type of monetary gain you might get by going through that process. So I, I've done both and it's, yeah, it's, my opinion, it has to be really, really well managed to do a merit-based and we're not there yet. And we might get there in the future, but we're, we're not there today.
Well, I'm just giving you my.
The city has tried that before, but you, it wasn't the three percent, the three percent cola was in there. And then they had an extra percentage in there for the departments to have, you know, a little leeway. It, it didn't.
We had it, we, we, we had it here, uh, one department did evaluations and probably averaged three and a half, you might even remember, probably averaged, it was like two or four, and probably one department averaged three. But another department, large department, just everybody's right on the money and gets the max. And when the question came back to councils is what, you said, well, I don't care what you say, it's all gonna be the max. So council changed it all to a max thing. So it, but it, but it depends on your department heads, if they're fair and honest with their standards.
Exactly.
I agree that a merit-based system, if it were properly managed, it, it, it can drive better results in a very real sense. Cause you're rewarding people for what they're doing and you're encouraging good behavior, if you will.
Right.
And giving everybody the same amount of money, no, no matter how well they perform, doesn't seem fair, I get that. So I do agree that it's a good, it's a good practice, but man, it takes, you, you, it takes a lot of training and a lot.
I support these folks getting as much money as they can, there's no question about it. And I've seen it all and in some respects, uh, I told you, this is a great place to be. There's other places that probably need some help on them and I won't argue with that either. But I also disagree with the level of certificate pay that we pay. I believe that anybody that has a certificate to meet the minimum requirements of their job should be reflected in their salary, period. Anything above that, that's beneficially used to the city, should be certificate pay. Because some folks, uh, wow, I'd just like to be paid their certificate pay. Okay, and I just make a comment, so if that means adjusting the pay accordingly, then adjust it accordingly. I also, I also believe, and I think I shared with C M A D the other night. It appears, I'm being very careful in my words, it appears that not everybody may be qualified under, under the job description.
There's only a few, I looked into that after you made that.
But, but all it takes is a, the few is, is, is problematic, cause everybody should.
No, let me, let me back up.
Everybody should comply.
No, but the ones that, the ones that aren't, going back to what we're talking about recruiting.
Yes.
We're recruiting apprentice level positions, so the ones that are not meeting are the ones that are apprentice level positions that are still working towards their certifications. Everybody else that's in a position that requires that certificate to be in a position has theirs.
Okay.
Including court and everybody else, so.
Okay.
We're, yeah.
Okay, okay.
There are some, there are some that are in training, they're in process and that's where we want them to be, we're encouraging that. Going back to the, to the certificate pay, keep in mind, like there, there is the baseline, to your point, what the minimum certificate would be.
Right.
So for a, a, the minimum standard, if you will, is a D license. For a or a C potentially for a water or wastewater, that's your minimum. We have a number of folks who've gotten their Bs and their As and so we are paying them for that, but they're not required for that position. We're just blessed that they've gone through that process.
But no disrespect to the guys, I really really like it, but there's four levels of license, DCBA.
Right.
And when you have a supervisor that's required by job description to have a B, then he should only get additional for the A. He shouldn't, or the other, the B should be already included in his salary, in my opinion.
And I hear what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, and but, but we're not, we're given a certificate as if they were nothing in four levels. So I believe that's an adjustment in pay for these guys.
Yeah.
Versus just that.
That's something, that's something that's worthwhile looking in.
Okay, that's just, I, I, so.
I remember having.
Pay people based on their qualifications and then whatever it is above and beyond.
I remember having this conversation, if I can, just be lighthearted about it for a second. I was in another city and I was working with, uh, a fire chief who was the fire chief and he was getting certificate pay.
Yeah.
And I was like, no buddy, you're, cause, cause we promoted from within and that was very common, so.
I'm paying you for this.
So he, yeah, so he had promoted up to that position and I had this conversation with him, I said, look, you know, we're, we're gonna bake that in, I'll make sure that you're whole.
Right.
But we're gonna bake that in and that certificate pay is gonna go away. Well, so he gets his check, so there was one check where he got both the, the baked in amount and the certificate pay, which would shouldn't have been, which is an error in his favor. And then the next one, he didn't have certificate pay. And he came to me, he was really upset, he was like, ah, you, you, you've shorted me, and I said, no, 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 we've baked it in and I had to show it to him and I said, go back, just look six months ago and look at your paycheck. And then look at today's paycheck, you'll see that it, it's obvious there's a difference, we're paying, we've, we've put it in your base pay. But it was a trust issue with him because he felt like he got slighted and it was just doing the math from one paycheck to the next. It's like, no, you, anyway.
All, all I'm saying is make them whole.
Yeah.
But make them whole in the salary where.
Yeah, same amount of money either way.
It's the same amount, but it's how, how.
Yep.
How it's, how it's booked.
Yep.
Okay, uh, vehicles and equipment, uh, you know, the city's got a lot, I guess, I don't know, this and that, so, um, unless somebody can really convince me of the dire need for it, you know, um, I don't know how, what the average age of the vehicles are, I'm not, I'm excluding the police department, I always wanna exclude them because that's their primary thing. But, but a police car that may be good for a hundred thousand, might make over here and somebody else two hundred thousand, if it's have basic care. Just making a general statement, so not everybody has to drive a new one and I'm not saying anybody's asking for that, I just wanna look at that.
Yeah, so you've got a fleet list, the age of the equipment's on the far left, so it'll tell you the year and then it has mileage and other.
Sure, do we assign vehicles outside of, I mean, the police department has assigned vehicles, I think every, am I right, every officer has assigned?
No. Yeah, they're fleet vehicles.
Right, no, 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 no. I, we're, we try to assign them because that way we can help somebody more accountable, but not everybody can do that depending on how many vehicles you have and what.
Yeah, so these are fleet vehicles, so they, yeah, they're assigned day and night.
Sure.
But the, you, I mean, there are weeks where you have three, three or four different people in the same vehicle. It's not always, cause we don't wanna let the vehicle just sit there.
No, I understand.
We're rotating them, but for the most part, we do try to get, for the same reason you're talking about, accountability.
When we went through COVID, that's when we made the change to everybody so we could give them more safety and secure. No, I understand that. You're not, you're, you're not gonna hear me criticize the police vehicles, okay? But I, but I would turn around on a maintenance truck and things like that, I look at it a little different, but anyway, those are my comments. I'm good. I got a lot, didn't I? And I hope anybody, it's after lunch, but keep smiling, folks. Anybody got any comments, questions, more stories? Sure, sure. Absolutely, I'm, I would entertain any thoughts and discussions.
What I would like, what I'd encourage you is look at the operations budget first. What is it, what do you want, because there's one-time expenditures and CIP investments that I would encourage you to treat separately unless, unless you're wanting to bake some aspect of that into your operations budget, like streets, that has been discussed. But what I would encourage you to do in interest of time is let's focus on the operations budget and any changes you wanna make there. And that goes back to some of the things you brought up, services, et cetera. Like, do we continue the current services we have, do we change service levels? Again, you've got a couple of requests for, for service level increases, one of the things that chief wanted to, would have said if he was in, if he was here today is, uh, he would, he really, really believes that detective position is needed, it will help his department. Uh, he said that he could look at maybe a, a mid-year so that we don't fund a full year of it, but if we funded six months. Uh, so that's, that's a plea that he had made, I think, Doug, didn't you prepare, did you print out what you prepared? Do you have it? You already gave, did you give, give it out? Okay, why don't we give that out right now and then? And then again, my, my encouragement would be just think about operations and what changes do you make? Do you wanna explain what that is, what you're handing out?
Let, let me make a couple of comments, he's gonna come up here, but I wanna make a couple of comments to all y'all out there, okay? I was in y'all's positions, I know what it ta, what it is and I know when somebody sits up here and says things that may not go very well. But we have a, we have a role to do what's best, we're all in a customer service role. Think about that, no matter what we do, no matter where we go, that's our number one thing is customer service to the citizens and the people of Casterville. How we, how we react, how we treat, how we do this and such like that. I've tried very hard and some folks have, but I might. Working through Scott, maybe come down and spend some time with you, John, or maybe you, Brianna, or whatever, but understanding when you look at the folks up here, we're all citizens first. So when we come, if, if we came to talk to you, don't, I mean, yeah, we're council members or whatever, but you have to make a command decision when you talk to them. Uh, wow, are they trying to just seek out information or are they trying to give me direction? Hopefully they're never trying to give you direction, cause that would be wrong. When I was in that role, I had, even when Mr. Lee was the mayor, they would come talk to me and I, they'd walk away and then I have to make a decision. Then whether what they said carries enough weight for me to change my direction or just say thank you and move on. And ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it was thank you and move on. Because you have to weigh that out, okay? Yeah, as a council member, they carry more weight in the conversation, but at the end, when they talk to you, they're just a citizen like anybody else. I just wanted to share that with you on that. Now, we sh, we all wanna be working through Scott, cause Scott is the administrator, he's responsible for everyone there. But I don't want anybody to take that the wrong way, there's not a soul up here that's gonna come to you and give you direction. And if you feel that, obviously you need to talk to Scott, but that's not the intent on anybody here. And if it is, I wanna know about it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you very much, uh, thank you.
In, in regards to the, the full-time officer, the chief does not have his own, does not have his city phone, he uses his own.
Okay.
That was my mistake.
Okay.
So for the full-time employee on the last couple pages, it shows, uh, year-to-date, how many cases we've worked and sent to the district attorney's office. year-to-date, how many cases we've worked and sent to the district attorney's office. So when the chief and I got here roughly around the same time in late twenty-two. And then I came in towards the end. We presented fifty-five cases for the whole year of twenty-twenty-two for the district attorney's office. Twenty-twenty-three, we presented ninety-three cases. Twenty-four, twenty-four, we, uh, submitted a hundred and forty-nine cases. As of today, we've submitted a hundred and nineteen cases. We're thirty cases away from matching last year and we still got a little less than half a month, half a year to go.
Sure. So. Are you, is those calendar years or budget years?
This is calendar years.
Those are calendar years, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Makes a difference.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, for the way we figure things, because our year ends on September thirtieth.
Yes.
Yeah, so you still have six months.
Right now, I'm the only detective. And with the caseload going up, more people coming into the area, you know, it's just, you know, crime's gonna go out, we're gonna have more traffic.
Sure.
And that extra employee, that detective slot will help ease some of this. Myself, and chief, when I'm, when I'm out doing my thing, the chief is a lot of times, you know, doing things, fingerprinting and doing things that, you know, another officer could be doing.
Doug, interrupt you a second, Councilman Lee, did you have a question?
Yes, sir.
I am.
So sorry, are we, are we, so are we deciding right now to add a detective? Okay, well, I'm just. Okay, I was just making sure there wasn't another question.
Oh, 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 I would, Scott, I would ask you to plug that into the budget numbers for the position.
I'm gonna get Leroy to give me the call.
Okay.
Plug that in.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
No, that, that.
You, you just got what you want, so if you got any.
No, that's, and, and that's my justification, I mean, it's just, things are just gonna grow.
Yes, sir, no, no.
And that extra body.
He said, you got, I mean, stop talking after you've made the sale.
Look, look, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you. I think you have a, a unanimous here, it's just, and I'll say it. If it comes to code enforcement, if it comes down to, uh, police protections, safety and security of our people, there's not a whole lot to talk about, okay? Move on.
One thing I'm gonna mention to y'all, so, uh.
I do have one question is.
Can I, can I talk about this real quick first? Is it related to the detective?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, so, you know, as our population grows and the caseload, are you guys targeting your caseload so, so when we have to do this again, if we keep growing, we're gonna have to hire another, right, correct? So do we have a basis point of that to where we understand? So we're gonna do a hundred this year, one detective can, can cover that, but when we hit two hundred, we're gonna need another detective and when we hit, like, is it, is that how that works?
I don't know if there's a set number.
I was gonna tell you, I know, I know, you know, my, my, I have family in law enforcement, I know in the, the county sheriff's office of, uh, Tarrant County, their caseload's eight hundred.
Per guy.
Per guy. But they aren't, but it, it sucks because they can't, there's no way, a human being cannot work eight hundred cases, it's not possible, but that's their caseload. So it, so asking for, well, what is a caseload, it goes back to, well, how, how nice do you want your parks to look? You know, it's, it's how, how quickly you want these cases resolved and, and how important are they? Because, you know, what's, and I think, I think we'll get with the chief to get an idea of what that looks like as far as how many cases it's reasonable to expect that they can, uh, handle. But it sounds like for two people, because it's really the chief and Doug tag teaming this, they did a hundred and fifty last year and you hear them saying, we, you know, if it keeps up like this, we can't, we can't do our jobs and do this, it just, that's why they need a detective to take on that load.
He was really more of a question for projection.
Yeah, I get it, yeah, so we'll get you that. Yeah, when, that's a great question, I'll, I'll get that to you. We'll work with the chief to get that, sorry, I, I was messing with you, but I, I, I really, yeah, once you, uh, so K nine, the, um, one, one of the good pieces of news we learned yesterday is that we, so we, um, out of all the departments that have access to that Uvalde, um, uh, fund, that grant fund, our department has been the most active. And because of that, the general or sergeant, whatever his title is, that's over that for, uh, the state, wants to appropriate more money to our department because they're getting more results from our department. And they're basically rewarding good behavior, we're thinking of it that way. So one of the things that they're looking to, to do is appropriate an additional seventy thousand dollars for equipment for the city of Castroville, which is fantastic. The, uh, what we're trying to ascertain right now is whether or not a K nine is considered equipment, right? Because for interdiction, interdiction services, a K nine would be fantastic. In fact, it would help our numbers grow considerably based on what we're doing for the state in this effort. Uh, it would be very specific to that effort, so I don't, I, I think that they're probably gonna agree with that. And I would expect that they may, uh, you'll be willing to fund that. So just letting you know that that was one of the things we had asked for, but we may have the funds to do that through another.
Do we have an officer that, uh?
They'll have to get trained.
That, okay, that, that has to go through training, he'd be qualified to be a K nine officer. But we have, but we have a volunteer that will do that. Uh, history, Castro had one one time, it didn't, it didn't pan out long-term for whatever reason.
He, uh, his wife was active in the military and they moved, so they lost a K nine.
Well, I do, I do believe that this, as I said before, I believe this is a very big plus for us. Uh, it helps with some of the issues we have with the traffic on this road. Plus, it's a tremendous PR issue, tremendous, go to the schools, do this. Uh, I'm, I'm all in favor of that.
Yeah, so we're, I'm excited that there, there may be a resolution there, and I think that is something that'll benefit the community and, and ideally, if we can get the funds to pay for it, then, um, all the better, right? I, if we can't get, yeah, if we didn't have the funds to pay for it, it'd be a little bit different, but anyway.
Can we get a consensus on the K nine?
Well, I, I would prefer that you hold off on that because, again, I need to verify whether there's a grant fund to do that or not. If you wanted to make the decision to say, hey, whether we get the grant or not, you want to fund it, that's certainly your prerogative.
I would support a K nine conditional on getting a grant.
Okay, will you do that? There you go, it's a, we would support a condition on a grant.
All right.
Now, would the, sorry, would the grant also include the overtime pay for the officer handling the dog?
Oh, yeah, that's a good thing.
Probably not, because usually they're, usually they're only gonna pay for one-time equipment expenditures. Um, unless it, other, it specifies otherwise, like, they pay the overtime for the, the, uh, traffic enforcement, so I don't know, we'll, we'll find out.
Well, yeah, that's a good question and I apologize, and thank you for bringing it up. The, uh, the, the care and outs, the care and, and the maintenance of the animal outside of normal working, does that mean you compensate the officer more or?
Yeah, usually.
It's his animal.
Usually that's the case, when you, when you have a K nine handler, um, they're responsible for the dog at all times and they get a stipend for that.
Okay, but it's, but it's kind of like a stipend.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's been my experience.
It's not they're getting twenty-four hour pay?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
Got it.
It's a stipend, um. Okay, so was that yes to the K nine? Did y'all finish that?
I believe it's a yes contingent upon grant funding.
All right, your detectives is gonna cost you, this is benefits, it's, your all-in cost is ninety-eight five. So that's an increase of ninety-eight five, all right. What else? So there's, yeah, in the proposed budget, to, to be clear, there, we don't have.
Our all-in position is currently filled.
What, streets? Yeah, so, yeah, that's gas, really, there, there is, that's in the enterprise. Streets, we are talking about a half-time person because they'd be half-gas, half-streets. But that's the only addition in the general fund right now.
The streets go to the gas?
What's that?
Does, does water pay part of the gas?
No, 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 just. So in our, so when we started, when we decided to take on the gas utility, we reached out to our current employees and said, hey, you know, who would be interested in learning, being dual-trained into, in managing our gas utility? And it just so happened that our streets folks were the most willing and, and interested in doing that. So we have dual-trained folks across the departments, we have some basic training, I think we had sixteen folks get trained in gas.
Right.
Um, but as far as primary response, responsiveness, right now, it's our streets folks that are responding in addition to Javier to gas-related issues.
Javier, do you have a full-time helper with gas?
No.
So there's only one full-time.
You got two, he has two kind of part-time, Robert and who's the other, and Ashton. So Robert and Ashton are two folks that are in the streets department presently that are helping gas when they can.
We talked about that with the utilities, but I understand that.
Yeah.
Sir.
Well, now, yeah. Yeah, so we did, I'm just letting you know, those are not in the proposed budget. Yeah, those are not in the proposed budget, you wanted, that's why I was gonna clarify. Right, yeah, so.
Safety levels are frozen with the exception of the addition of the general fund staff, frozen in place. That's why I asked the question, they're all full? They're all full, they're, they're, they maintain the level of service.
Yeah, again, I, I.
That's my opinion, what, what do you guys got, thought?
Yeah, I, you do need, at some point, you're gonna, you need more parks people and more streets people. To do, just based on the conversation, the constant conversations we have with council and those expectations.
Including you or in addition to you?
Including you. Addition you.
I, I will, I will go out on the field if I have to.
I'm not trying to push you out of feeling.
It's you, Sandy.
But I believe that we're all working supervisors. And I know you had them great on the Fourth of July, you did good stuff too. I mean, we're, we're all in there, we're all in.
It's Jonah, it's Sandy, it's Larry and Jonathan. And, yeah, Justin is temporary.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, Steve, it's a, it's a, one of the things I did add, uh, this last year was a part-time facility person. Because for the very reason that some of the, I think, Councilman Lee brought up is, there was no one looking at our, maintaining our facilities. When things broke, we'd call a contractor and fix it, there was no one really doing the maintenance, so we now have a part-time maintenance person doing it, so.
I like that. On the streets, how many people work in the streets, three? One and two, I mean, one and two halves? No offense, no offense. You, you have, out of those three, is, what's an equipment operator? You? See?
And Robert too.
Figured that one out, right?
Yeah, well, and Robert's also an equipment operator.
Okay, equipment as in, you run a maintainer? Awesome, rent a, rent one, please some drinks. I understand, but, but, but we're not at the utility system yet.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but when we get to that, it would be my intent to have a second full person at the gas. Because the streets, in my, I, I think it's great you guys learn things, I think it's great that you have the ability to cross straight and work with each other. But there's so much, at least the opinion that I have, and I think, I think it's, the details may not be the same, but I think it's a shared thought that we need to be more full-time on that street maintenance and drainage. If nothing else, that's why I asked you about maintainer, cleaning silt lines makes a big difference, big difference in, in helping the drainage and, and showing we're doing something type of stuff.
We did do.
So I, so I want to, I want to do what I can, and I hope council will concur to push you more full-time into the streets. Does that make sense? That's, that's the goal, I believe.
Well, and I, and that, that's what I was kind of making the plea for, I, I still think, even with that, even adding a person, a full-time person to gas, I think you need someone that is dedicated to just doing right-of-way and drainage. Because I think, I really do believe that that is a full-time position, like, you could have someone just mowing and then doing drainage work. And that's a, that's one person doing that all.
You'll get no argument from me, the, the, uh, uh, way back when, the public works had one, but, uh, for whatever it's worth, twenty-five years ago, they made a command decision not to do it.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe we need to get back to that.
Yeah, it may not be this year, it sounds like it isn't, but that's, that's just, I'm making a plea for when we get to that point, those are two areas I really.
That's a customer service thing that the people deserve.
Right.
At command.
Okay. He is full-time, so I've, I've talked about this, I've talked about this before, um. No, the pay is, okay, so he was hired as a part-time manager. And at his choice and discussion with Pete, they decided to, to move him to full-time. And in, in agreeing to do that, he agreed to take a lower hourly pay so that he could be full-time and have benefits. Right, it's only, it's twenty percent, yeah, yeah. When, when we're ready to do it, it's not. When we're ready, when I think we're ready, I, I don't, we're not ready, Sheena, we just aren't. And I don't, I mean, I don't want to get into those personal decisions today, but I'll just tell you that there's, that is a work in progress, and I'm not satisfied with where Michael is and where the airport is right now. And, and, you know, first you have to make me happy at the job description you've been given. And then we can talk about expanding your job description, and granted, he was hired as a part-time manager, and as a part-time manager, I think he would have excelled, it's great. But as a full-time employee, it becomes, there's, there's greater expectations that are placed upon you, and we're not, we're not meeting those right now. So, um, you know, that's, that's an issue, that's why I'm saying I'm not, I know that you and Bob have both been hitting me with that, I'm like, guys. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the question about the airport is whether you want, I mean, whether you want to go the route of hiring. Because frankly, what would be great is if we had another David that was a part-time airport manager that was capable of just being, one, didn't need the money, could work part-time and, and really enjoyed aviation and was able to do that. Those are very, very few and hard to come by. Uh, so barring that ability to get somebody who i- is able to do that, then you need a full-time airport manager, and to the airport budget, you're looking at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? To, to hire a capable full-time air, that, that's what the market rate, if you will, for that position. And that's why we have what we have, we have two people who are really maintenance guys. Yeah, well, we'll.
I think on, 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 on that very note, and I think you're talking about the, the twenty percent salary out of the airport fund. Okay, I think Brianna does great well she's doing, I think she's gonna fixing to get her hands full even more as more and more comes. And I, I'm not, I'm just, I'm more, move her more away from the airport so she can more concentrate on what she's doing with that. Because these, these, once these guys start building out here, you're, you're, you're already busy. You're already busy with all that stuff, and you're fixing to get more. So that's just my opinion on that too.
Well, I would like to move that, I, I think everybody involved would like to see that shift happen.
But I understand.
We just aren't ready yet, when we get there, we'll go, yeah.
Houston, did you have anything else?
So, um, are we considering expanding the streets crew this year? Because I know that, if we're going down the list of things we might, of the questions here, there's a few that if we say yes to them, we'll absolutely need more streets people. Did, was that a, did we decide that, is that a no, or did I miss the question?
Well, that's up to the council, but my position, my opinion is, at least right now, is you have three. If we moved over and we talked to utilities and we, we worked on getting another full-time person for the gas, then that, that would allow those three to dedicate more time towards the street stuff right now. And then we can, then we can explore it the next year if we want to expand it even more, that's my thought. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I, I want to hear this question.
Yeah, yes, sir.
So mostly. That's correct.
Maintain the right of way.
Yes, basically, ma, yeah, basically. So we're just doing minor repairs. And they have from time to time, they've rented equipment and actually done uh chips. No, they did kind of a. Well, you do that, yeah, you do seal crack, but also, didn't you, we did the little test strip of road not too long ago? In the last year, where you actually. Yeah. Yeah. So he's done a, yeah, so they, they've done some rehab. If you want to think about it, like some light rehab of roads where they were able to mill it down and actually apply cold mix on the top and roll it out and uh using mostly rented equipment because the equipment we have is inadequate, you know, I, it pains me when I see us rolling out with uh the two right side tires of a of a dump truck instead of using a a roller like we should or that kind of thing.
Old school.
Yeah, um, yeah.
We had a lot of things, but the uh, there used to be the city rehabbed its own streets and then actually worked with the county and then we rehabbed and we did different things. And I understand that.
So we have the skills and ability to turn a lot of it.
For, in my opinion, recommendation to council is to allow you guys more freedom to be able to do maintenance activities specifically to the streets and drainage and then figure it out as we move on. Maybe we want to expand it.
And that's why you're adding that additional position in gas, is to free up their time, right?
To allow that, not that, not that you shouldn't still be qualified in everything because at any given time, you may be pulled, everybody, everybody in public work should have some degree of help of of cross training, even in all the utilities. Because even in electric, a helper means a lot when you're up in the air, if they know the materials.
Right.
So. That would be my recommendation on that.
Other, other than, well, yeah, yeah, other than adding a gas person, so they're.
I'm sorry.
Uh, well, other than, if you add a gas person, so the thing that's different this year is that we took on gas with no personnel. Javier's been here, but he's been here for two and a half months, three months, four months, because time flies, four months. Um, so most of the year, we had no gas personnel. We were doing with our own folks and contractors, that sort of thing. So um there will be a slight difference this year to next if you add a gas person that relieves the two folks in streets to allow them to focus on streets. I think that's why you're the mayor saying, but if you look at two years ago, when we weren't doing really gas, it was all outsourced anyway, then yeah, it's the same as two years ago. Does that make sense?
I want to be in a position to allow Javier to go find, take somebody away from somewhere else. Find the guy you want to work with you, maintain the gas. That's what I want.
You're correct, you're right. You're right.
I understand, I understand. And I was trying to at least do, move towards something, I'm going to borrow your phrases, something's better than nothing, and start in this, prove the fact that it works for us, and then expand on it as we go.
Well, it's something that.
That's my position.
Well, I'm working on two, can, so there's two things that that I'm working on, on the material side of things, if the physical streets, and one of them, you've already told me your opinion on, that's working with the county to get their project going. Um, so that, that's, we have a plan, I got to get in front of the county and get it, get it approved and get the interlocal approved by you all and them. That would cost us some money. You would have to appropriate out a fund balance to to pay for whatever that material cost ended up being that wasn't budgeted. I don't think it'd be a whole lot of money, but it will be two miles roughly worth a street. The other thing that that I'm looking at that um I attended a presentation earlier this week, it's another um way of doing street maintenance that involves a type of uh sealant, very much like the one you described, Bob, not the rejuvenator uh.
It's a slurry that you put over it's kind of.
It's something similar, uh but it's what they, they've been doing in Hondo, and they've done fifty miles worth for two million dollars. We don't have, we have twenty six miles worth of street. Um, if you were just to apply simple math, you know, that's a million dollar fix that we could go do it. Now, is it appropriate to do everywhere? No, because you really need a good street to start with. And where Hondo is ahead of us, because they have a department of twelve people and because they have all the staff, et cetera, they funded it. Their streets are in general have been, are in a better condition than ours. And so theirs was at an appropriate place to be able to do that overlay and not be wasting, you know, throwing good money after bad in that's, in that sense. But there are a lot of roadways, some of them being the ones that you mentioned that that were done with county's help within the last three years and and earlier that are still in a good enough condition that you could overlay them and you'll extend the life of that road. So that's something that I just don't have the numbers or a plan put together, but I do intend to bring to you all. I don't know if we'll have a separate presentation or do a lunch and learn or or what we'll do, but to have you all look at that as a potential solution. Um, but that would be outside of this budget process because it's not ready yet. Yes. Correct. That's what I'm telling you, I'm still evaluating different options, and and this is the last one I've evaluated.
So would we have a consensus of council to say allocate fifty thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever the number is, we're going to put this much in the budget? And either it'll go to paying the county to do some roads, or if that doesn't work out, we'll spend it on something internally, but we're going to mark this much in the budget for that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I.
I agree.
I'm, yeah, I'm going to speak on, be hard. It is, it's expensive. So it depends on what you're doing, right? The the projects we're looking at, so what you could do, and what I would, what I would suggest is, in a very real sense, your fund balance represents an over collection of taxes over prior years. That's the way a citizen might look at it. Because in essence, you've profited in years and built a fund balance. Now, generally, I, I would like to see the fund balance used for one time, two, two, two categories that meet two tests, right? One, is it a one time expense? Not operational. And two, is there a grant where we can get more bang for our buck? If we put a dollar in, will we get fifty cents back? We get a dollar, a dollar fifty. So I try to look at those and recommend to you all that you look at those funds as grant match, match dollars. But what I would suggest is, before you jump off the deep end and maybe upset a lot of constituents about raising rates, you do have a healthy fund balance, general fund balance. You could afford to this year, say, you know what, we're going to appropriate in our budget and and call it a capital expense, because that's what it would be. We are going to budget this amount of money, whatever this amount of money is. And I would suggest somewhere between two hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand dollars for street repair and maintenance. And that would be used as the funding source for both an interlocal agreement with county, if that comes to fruition, and some type of overlay project or a mill and overlay project where we use our own folks and we bought, we uh rent the equipment and we, and we do it ourselves, right? Because we have the training to do it, we just don't have the equipment.
Does the city have a, 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 a street paving plan? For example, years ago, uh city council would approve and went out and did an assessment, and we had a map, and these were different colors, so.
Yeah, we have that.
This is why we're going to do this rear, this one we're going to do this year, basically a proposed plan.
We have an unfunded, yes, we have an unfunded one of those.
But we have one of those.
Yeah.
So in other words, when, if we were to fund some monies, it's not a matter of we're going to rehash, well, how come mine didn't get done? Well, this is the priorities that was decided already.
Correct. I need to present it to you all, so you can tell me if you agree with the streets that were identified.
Because that's the first thing we get, well, what about mine? What about mine? I want to have.
Well, the first thing they got was me coming and saying, please don't do mine.
Okay, but do you understand what I'm talking about? A priority list of what's what. Based on, based on sound engineering and or public works involvement to say, yeah, these are our worst.
Which is along my question, is, is.
Hold on, hold on, you don't have the floor because you're talking.
We have a standard.
We have one.
Yeah, we, no one, no one's proposing that.
I'm not proposing rehashing, I'm saying, do we have a plan?
We do.
We need to bring that back.
We do.
Do it, move forward.
I'll, I'll bring it up. It's in your, it's actually in your, in that council.
Okay.
On the sure point, but I'll, I'll send you the link.
So in your street study, I mean, and and if, if the road base or whatever's underneath that asphalt is failing, I mean, we can't just see, you can't go over with a sealer. It's a waste of money. Yeah.
Right.
But you have a study, engineering study that says this street, we can seal, this street, we need to re, that's already done.
Yes and no. So what we have is a streets plan that shows the ones that need full reconstruction.
Yeah.
And the ones, one of our challenges is, uh initially, when we put this plan together, we identified the streets that would not have water and sewer conflicts that needed rebuilding or needed resurfacing. Not rebuilding, because we didn't rebuild anything, but we resurfaced um all those roads first. So that was our plan. So the first thing we did was we took care of the roads that weren't likely to have a water or sewer conflict or that had a water conflict and a water project, Lafayette's a good example of that, where we did the water line and we did the street at the same time. Now, the outcome, something else is.
But when we look at that.
And that's why, sorry.
It's important to you, when you look at, when you look at that, it's a tough call, but there are streets here that the last time they were surfaced was forty years ago, right here in front. But it doesn't have the, the amount of base under it, but it's got a solid foundation. So you, so you just cover over it.
Right.
But you take a road like River Bluff where the shifting is all over the place, the only way you're going to do it is dig it out, start from scratch. So you, you have them all over town, but some don't need pulling out. But they need to resurface on them to save what you have. So.
And that's what we're basically doing with the county is.
But if I was just looking straight, which ones don't have base, well, heck, I'm going to pick on this road. But then I'm going to question, why am I doing it? You understand what I'm getting at?
If it's going to fail.
Yeah, yeah. You have to look at your failure rate, your maintenance things, you can tell by the patches on the roads.
So we've done a little over, uh almost twenty percent of the roads in the last four years um through various projects. The roads that were chosen were chosen based on those criteria. That's one reason why, and I was a little worried about more blowback, blowback than what we received because the roads themselves weren't in very bad condition. The, the irony is, or the kind of the um challenges is that where your money goes the furthest is on the roads that are, don't, that look the best. Because you're sat, it only costs you a buck and you can extend that, I'm going to use the term, like it costs you a dollar and it, and you can extend the life of that road for ten years. Right? So that dollar invested now, whereas the, you know, another neighborhood like River Bluff might look at that and go, wait a minute, why are they redoing all those roads? Ours are way worse, yeah, because yours are going to cost ten million dollars to redo or whatever, you know, two million.
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah, so Country Village uh was recently done within the last two years. And that's one reason why they ended up getting, getting done, because there wasn't, the base wasn't good, the, they really just needed an overlay. So they've been overlaid. It's now time to revisit that project and do a seal, seal code of some kind to preserve and extend the life of that investment. So we'll probably end up targeting those as just uh an initial investment. But um, yeah, so we do have a plan. I'll make sure that y'all have a, a fresh link and a fresh look at that plan so you can see what we've done versus uh what's left to do um and what categories they fall in, overlay versus rebuild. If we are going to, one of the good news, good things is, if we are able to partner with the county and they're able to to do this on a consistent basis, which that's a big if, big if, polit, politics change, et cetera. But if we're able to do that, and they've indicated they're willing, and I'm really grateful to Larry for having the conversations he's had with me about it. If we're able to do that, then it's not as big an issue to go in and chip seal a road that maybe there is a water or sewer project that you, that's not funded presently, but may get funded in the next two years, and you're going to have to go tear that up because it's just chip seal, and we only tear up a small section of it, and we can go in and fix that relatively inexpensively. Where it gets really expensive is when you're doing that to concrete or or asphalt roads. Those are expensive. And those are all in our newer soda business, they aren't, they aren't in our town. Okay.
So I had a. A question, so I want to make sure I understood your suggestion properly. When you said that we could essentially select two hundred fifty or four hundred thousand dollars out of the fund balance, are you saying to put them, put that two hundred fifty thousand, say, in the budget and just right at the bottom, and we're going to balance the budget with two fifty thousand out of?
Correct.
Fund balance.
That's what I'm suggesting.
So the rest of the budget would be balanced, but it would specifically be this item on top. We're trying a streets program this year with fund balance.
You're allocating it for fund balance. And the idea is that in future years, you know, you could hopefully not spend fund balance and and be able to rely on growth and and property values, et cetera.
Right, the, the, the use of fund balance is as needed because if your revenues are increased, there's no need for it.
Well, it's just, yeah, it's just like utility fund. I told you all, the last two years, you've adopted a, the use of fund balance, but haven't used it because there was, you know, revenues were sufficient and expenditures were sufficiently low that you covered. Um, so, yeah, I, I think that's what Councilman Lee is saying is, if you adopted it, but you may, I mean, you may not need it at the end of the year, which is, is fine. Yeah, that's where I'd probably put this amount. And then I would click, because it's a separate line and it's real clear to track. I would recommend whatever amount y'all approve as fund balance, I would put that amount there. And then to David's point, we'd put an adjusting entry at the end where we say use of fund balances, and we, we would use that amount for. It's just material. It's the two things.
John, you can make that work?
It would be the money for the county and the money for some program that we will present to you for your.
You can make that work? You can make that work? Well, you know what? Give it, give it your best shot.
The answer is yes, there. Yes, we will with your word.
Yes, okay. That, that, that's a huge customer service issue to the public, so you're the, you're the, you're the face of everyone out there for that, so. Go forth and conquer. I, I believe that. Two fifty.
It's at some number between two fifty and four.
I'd say two fifty and and then we can always come back.
That's true, we can always come back.
Yes, four point.
Let's start at a two fifty because let's kind of, let's not.
Four point what?
What I'm trying to get at is.
Four point one.
I don't want to go out and hire a contractor all of a sudden and spin it all up. Let's, let's start, let's do it, but let's start slow, improve the point, and then move on. Does that make, is that you favor that? Yep, plug it two fifty in.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, good. Uh, i- if we can, folks, I know, I know we're, we're running short because I think uh Councilman Burris has to go, but I know Mr. Lee wanted to talk about City Hall.
Hey, guys.
And we talk about City Hall really quick, improvement to that. Are you at a point where we could talk about that, or are we okay on the streets? You got your marching?
Yeah, 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 I got my, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Mr. Lee.
Anyway, we, we have recently put out, uh, some separate submitted obligations. Well, there were things like a new food department, an unknown amount for this building, to put a rear area on here, make the building usable. Estimated figures were two to five million dollars.
It was, it was in the one point five to three point five range, not
It was not insignificant. It was undefined. Twenty percent of that money is, uh, is in design, uh, building. Public Works needs a facility and a placement somewhere other than what it is. And so, uh, my, my, my thinking, this building really is not suitable for the size for the city by ten years. Just is, if they want to get rid of the building, I don't think so. So with the money, we're instead on this one, it's three million and police department, three and a half million, so forth. Other works, who knows, uh, why don't we consider, set a big contract to build a new city hall? Open a public works yard and then turn either a portion of all other parts, those that are D part. And, uh, because there's plenty of like this city water and sewer down there right now. And you wouldn't necessarily have to close off all of our B slots, but you might consider that if you're ready, which, build a new city wall. Over the public works yard, uh, and when this entity moves there, bring the police department over here and with the necessary upgrades in here. But the vaults would be for this, that, and the other, air conditioning, electrical upgrades. You do not have to do the second floor, which is very, very expensive. And, uh, then, uh, the other part of that was, we, we, there's a high probability that we could put, as much as I've done against this in the past, public works on airport property. Otherwise, we would have to buy some properties, which is not cheap. And, uh, and look at placing a public works facility out there at a point in time. So that keeps downtown core alive, with the city hall, police department, gives public works, potentially another place to go. And instead of spending billions on refreshment, we've put it into a facility that has the features that we want. And still may have a total disorder part of the construction of all these buildings. So, uh, that's my proposal that we consider.
Did y'all see that email that was forwarded?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, I can touch base really quick. Uh, twenty-five years ago. Just a real quick history lesson. Public Works was the one lot where the old city warehouse was, the building we added back, the vehicles, the well. City bought those other five lots when they were up for sale by the Sisters of Divine Providence for potential development. They bought them for the public works and originally for the intended and new community city hall. One of the process, one of the thoughts was we build a new city hall there, which has all the city services. Basically donate this building to the historic society because of the historic value of this building and move on. Of course, that didn't happen. Then it was, okay, we'll do this or that. We bought the Mary House. But there was still public works to build a municipal complex there. And then, of course, that died away, and I believe it was when Mayor Lee was the mayor that they, after the floods, they tried out the warehouse, they built the, uh, we had a trailer that first, but anyway, the portal buildings that are down there. And then things went different with the last, uh, administrations, I think, trying to work through economic development to develop that. For some folks wanted some multifamily or commercial developments on that. I still believe that that's prime property to build a new municipal complex and you can do something else with this. So I'm, while, while I may have a difference of opinion on some of the details with Mr. Lee, I, I do, I've always believed that that's prime land to build a new city hall with a PD on it, a public works office on it, and all the city services right in between and do something else here. His thought that he proposed to me was that this turned into a PD municipal court type building versus, uh, the city offices go down there. I think it's awesome, but who am I? I'm just, I'm just the guy that setting up here, talking about it. So I do think that's a good use of that. Uh, public works, buying property, airport, yeah, okay. But there's also that other property, the Beverly property that's on four seventy-one.
There's also the property that, Alsatian Oaks?
Alsatian Oaks has two, you can't build a public work facility in there.
No, no, but you can do a PD.
But you could do other things in there. So there's, there, there are some other things, but I know some people will argue that's not the way of the growth. But it's, it's fixed to be in front of it, a high school, maybe in the future. So I just think about that. That's just my thoughts. I would support that.
Let's break it down into just one issue now.
Okay.
And we can actually rest out.
Right.
Are we interested in building a new city hall on the public works yard? Is just leaving that at that price, completely redoing this, police department could be a part of that facility.
Well, you would have to remodel this.
Start to completely remodel this.
You don't have to put in a ditch, is what you're doing. And you still maintain the historical value of the building. It's PD and headquarters, for example. It's
So, uh,
You take the building that they have and either, either lease it as commercial or sell it as commercial.
No, police department.
That's the old post office. But it's just a thought.
Money better spent, build a new city hall.
I think it's a terrible idea, but that's just my opinion. I think it's a terrible idea. I think your, your city hall is, this, this building, this is a historic building. And I think, I disagree with Bob. I think that you're gonna have, when you do that expansion, if you do the expansion, that you're gonna have enough space to be here for a while. Um, you, you may have to some point tailor back, like for instance, you might put the court somewhere else in the future or something along those lines. I don't know. But, um, I think you, you should invest in the city hall, but that's my strong opinion. Because you're gonna have to get, you're gonna have to, the, the majority of this cause, sorry, the majority of this cost is a remodel of the building. The, the building has to be taken care of. So there is, unless you're gonna get rid of the building, if you're gonna give it to someone else or sell it, the building has a certain amount of maintenance cost that is needed. It needs, you know, new electric, it needs new roofs, it needs other things, right? Right.
We do not need to use the upstairs, and that's what also worries to put that whole facility out there.
Understood.
You can do things on it, it's a market central window, so I can be addressed, so they don't keep them banned.
Right.
Maybe it's an outside phase or something, or to take care of that. In no way should we form a suggestion of getting rid of this building at the time.
No, 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 no.
For a second.
Right. Yeah, I heard you say PD. Uh, that's an interesting, it's an intriguing thought. I just, I still think it's a terrible idea. I think, I think this is city hall, but, yeah.
A previous council discussed that before y'all, when I was here. Well, no, but they did. They talked about building a complex over public works, including the library senior center over there. Plus, they turned around and said the PD could come here. Personally, you're gonna have to do something with the upstairs because it is crumbling. You'll have to do something where you improve it up there for offices or not. Because if you save the money in here to rewire it, which is quite expensive, you know, why if you're not going to try to preserve something upstairs? If you're not gonna use it.
So
You could put a shaftless elevator, you could take the
Drop people down, throw them down the shaft, throw them down the shaft.
He didn't say elevatorless shaft. He said shaft, it's elevator. Uh, so fundamentally, right now, we're planning to refurbish this building and build a new police station, refurbish city hall, build a new police station, and eventually build a new public works yard.
Right.
This plan seems to be, we're still gonna refurbish city hall, we're gonna build a new city hall instead of a new police station, and we're still gonna build a new public works building. So I don't know, because we're still gonna build two new buildings and refurbish this one, that the actual cost is gonna be that different. It feels like the cost is gonna end up being pretty similar either way. Um, because you're, well, um, and so then it just becomes a question of, do we think this, there is, is there value to keeping this building as city hall? And I do think the answer to that question is yes. There's, there's a lot of history here. And that is something this town highly values, is the history of the buildings that have been here and have been used. And it hasn't always been a city hall, and it doesn't always have to be a city hall. But I think, based on my experience of Castroville, it would be more appropriate to keep city hall in a new bill, or in a historic building than to build a fresh one and move city hall there. I think something would be lost in translation. And I really don't like the idea of moving public works even temporarily into the RV park, because first of all, that's a much less central location. Uh, there's gonna be a lot more running all the way out to the edge of city and then all the way back. Temporarily, but during that time, it would disrupt an asset that generates money for the general fund. Um, the, the RV park does produce money into the fund. Now, you may disagree with how, or you may not believe how much that is, but even you expect it to be some non-zero amount that it's contributing. And that is of value to have a generating asset.
Well, and I, I would suggest there's alternative. If you have to move public works, my recommendation, and we looked at this and talked about it briefly, but if you're gonna fill in those ponds that you're creating, uh, when you fill those in, if you do it in such a way that it, it supports a future building, you have the ability to put a facility out there at the wastewater treatment plant. And that's where you could, that would be a logical place to move public works, at least temporarily, until you found an appropriate site to move them permanently. So I would, I would recommend that if you really do chase this down and decide to go that direction, I would suggest not putting them in RV park, but put them up on, at the wastewater treatment plant. Yeah.
Now, in discussions with a contract, reuse this building, so going to go one way or the other, it needs to happen now, make that decision. So you don't, you know, basically commit those funds, but there's not enough parking here. And there's really not enough office space, even with the use upstairs. This room is too small to take care of the future of a room of five, six, seven thousand people, which is his beginning.
Well, if you're looking at, uh, it would be good to get an estimate of what that might, what, what is the vision for this future complex at public works, where, where they are presently? If it's a city hall and whatever else it might be, it'd be really good idea to know from, from council, what is your vision for that? Because that's gonna dictate the price tag, right? What is it gonna look like? Is it gonna look like, is it gonna be a brick and mortar building that looks like this building, kind of blends with the historic character of the downtown area? And is it a two-story or three? God forbid it's a three-story right next to the
It would be right across the street.
Yeah.
The only other three-story town.
That's true.
It might survive.
Might. Um, anyway, we need to know what the scope is to get an idea of a cost. I agree with David. I don't, I don't, I don't think this is, it's not gonna be a cost-saving measure by any stretch. It may be the appropriate one based on size and what you're talking about. Um, anyway, but I haven't, yeah, I heard it from Sheena in Houston.
I can, I can support that idea. As big as the public works yard is, we can look at packing up the library. But I like to see some numbers. Before I say yeah, but I like the idea.
From a very small place, well, half the size of here. My mom and her city council restored our quarter. We still have quarter, we still have everything that we do in this. And there's something for me, because I grew up there, when I go back to where I am, um, it's all still there and it's still functional. And I think in my group, what we call group, there's a rock piece on that. So my point is the history, like Castroville's about. The numbers would have to be really good on the other side to go get something new in town versus reusing it.
It's not gonna be good, it's just about space. I mean, I, I think that not, you're gonna spend, I, I, I bet at the end of the visioning process we go through and everything that gets to say is what are we gonna end up putting there, whether it's a library and a, you're gonna end up building a monstrosity of a building to accomplish all the things that you want to accomplish there and think about the future growth and capacity and the size. And you're gonna wanna twice the size room of this, I would think. And so everything would get bigger and there'd be a lot more rooms, a lot more space, a lot more expense. Uh, you're not gonna save money, but it, but it might be more, if you really believe in that level of growth and that level of need in the future, it might make more sense to spend that money there than spend it here. But I, I still don't agree. I still think this is where you, you invest your money, number, for, for a couple of different reasons. One, the amount of money you're gonna spend is gonna be a lot less overall. I do believe that's, can be demonstrated. And then two, uh, I just think it's the right thing to do from a historic standpoint. It anchors your city, uh, yeah, well, the historic, it, it, it makes the city, puts it in the primary role of hi- historic preservation, because you're preserving one of the older and, and more influential and more important buildings. And you're ensuring that that's gonna be the case forever, uh, by investing in it. Uh, but those are, I mean, that, that's all. That's not my Yeah. Well, I, to get to numbers, we'd need to do like a needs analysis on what this complex would look like at the public works facility. And I hear what you're saying, Bob, that's years down the road. I don't know if it is years down the road. The East Pond, yeah, the East Pond could be filled in really, relatively quickly. Yeah. So compact, meeting, compact standards doesn't take years, it takes equipment. No, I don't, well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think it'll take years to fill in either.
You're on the train already, it's gonna spend money on this building. Okay, and you're gonna leave the station, you're gonna say, over already started?
I know. Well, that is my concern, is I, yeah, that's, that's my concern all along, is whether y'all are really committed to doing the city hall project. Because I know that where we're at right now, as I understand it, is council's approved, going to get a design and a probable cost for what it will take to re, to build the building that's been proposed with the annex, et cetera. Now, all of that, to your point, it, it, we're not so far down the road that you can't scrap any part of that, right? So if council wants to revisit the scope of that project, now would be the time to do it, because that was really a scope that was identified by the prior council. So if this council has any reservations about the needs analysis, but I would imagine that's part of what this, that the Fort Powell, Carson and Pugh group is going to do, is they're gonna try and validate with us that the floor plan and the annex and the space use is appropriate before they get too far down the road and, and actually designing the building.
Brianna, can I ask you a question? What, uh, the old firehouse, what are they putting in there?
I think it's to make it, uh, into a conference room to like an office.
So it's still part of the emergency services property? Okay. The only reason I ask that is emergency services all in one place. I'm just throwing that out.
Is what? Oh, yeah.
With, with PD there. That's all I'm throwing out. This is a thought. Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Let's go through some things really quick, okay? Because we're trying to get some consensus on the general fund. Let's just try to get some really quick, okay? On this, we talked about the streets, we're good. We talked about the detective, we're good. We talked about the, uh, the canine with the grant, we're good. Would ever, would anybody have any objection to, I'm going, we talked about freezing positions in the general fund, except for that one there, too. And I wanna make sure everybody's okay with that. Okay?
Freezing the general fund positions.
Okay, I would, I would propose this stuff for the library, this twenty-eight thousand dollar list on that, for the security, the ADA door, the things I got. I would support those, but I'm asking council. Consensus on that? Good. Okay. Uh, you guys really need to do more? Say yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, well, you gotta maintain things. Okay, I understand that. Uh, those are my opinions on that. Okay, then I'm good with that one, too. Uh, I'm gonna leave. Anybody, we're, we're good with, well, we already talked with the PD on their, on the base. We're good with the three percent. Y'all are agreeing with the three percent, colon.
PD base?
Sixty-five.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
The minimum for that. I talked to the chief.
That's in your proposed budget.
He was very clear.
He was going on this list. He was going down this list.
Yeah, well, I'm, yeah, I'm kind of shifting. I, I've stopped this list.
Okay, a different list now.
The way that we're paying one, the giving electricity to the others. If I put in health and retirement, the rest of that, those are coming up to the minimum wage to the state protectors.
That's something we could ask them to do to provide us a whole compensation package. What it is per face pay plus benefits.
Yeah, you, well.
Raise it if it's not.
If it's the same as the same.
You follow what I'm getting at? If, if, if somebody's getting $20 an hour and their benefit package is worth $5 an hour, basically the cost to the district of the city is $5 an hour.
Okay, I'll look at that. I.
I don't know.
I just want, it, it has implications in the rest of our pay plans. Because for instance, when you go, so we have, have folks that are at the apprentice level, making $17 an hour, $18 an hour. These are folks with no experience. They're getting trained on the job. And then when they get their tech one, that's a three or four dollar an hour raise. So now they're up at the $21 range, et cetera. If you bring that lowest group up to what you're saying is, I think the $21 minimum, it is, well, that's the, that's the number on your sheet. I'm just going to tell you, when they look at those things, they don't consider benefits because you can't spend benefits at the grocery store. So when you look at those rates, what you're talking about, they're looking at the hourly wage that person makes. What is their take-home pay before taxes?
What I would suggest you, sir, provide, look at your staff, okay? We already talked about, I think the consensus is a 3% merit and then, and we talked with the.
That we had a consensus.
Well, would we.
Bob and I both kind of made faces when you said.
Oh, not merit. I'm sorry, 3% cola.
Cola.
The consensus was 3% cola. There's 3% cola. I understand that. Okay. Let me rephrase that. 3% cola. But what I would encourage you to do is we have pay adjustments in the PD. I would encourage you to look at all your staff and if you could recommend any need for any additional pay adjustments.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
To get to those wages, like you're talking about, something we could consider if you feel the, the need on those, okay? Is there anything else on this unfunded at this time? I mean, it's not that we can't look at them later, but this time, no, we're good. Okay. I'm just going to ask you a question. I made a comment, but I will use, I will, obviously it's the consensus of the council. Community development, economic development department, guys.
Well, hang on, those are two different things.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't say community development. I meant the economic, the travel, the tourism. Just that one fund, that one department. Well, it's an economic development tourism, it's kind of group.
Well, yeah, no, so there's two things. See, you have a tourism and marketing and then.
But it goes into one department, right?
You have, and then you have economic development, I believe.
Is it two separate budgets? I'm sorry.
The economic development budget is for the board that.
It's for the board.
Because you have to approve the economic development board budget.
Which is one of the questions, yeah, it's one of the questions I had.
We don't have a board budget because we haven't had a board meeting in six months.
Every year you have to approve it. And so the past one that you have probably there, I don't know if we have the current one is what they're looking at. Yes, that would be something that you would look at dissolving if you were considering dissolving the board. Their budget would go away.
So, so I can cut to the chase on this. I believe that that board was created for a sole purpose, to be able to utilize city-owned property for economic development, and I don't agree with that. But again, that's my opinion. Because I, I was told, and I may be wrong, that city property, when the city was looking at potential development of it, that was a way to develop it without having to sell to the public.
I know the city I came from, we had.
Makes a difference.
For sales tax or was it sales tax or property tax?
Sales tax.
And, and we didn't have the extra.
Right.
Percent here, and that's one of the ways you can.
Yeah, but no, the mayor's correct. So the EDC, EDCs are formed to give cities greater ability to do things that they are not, a general law city can't do.
Right.
Such as making separate agreements with the developer and not having to go through a public process to, to sell lands or buildings. So it, it gives you a lot, lot more flexibility to do development agreements with the, for the purposes of economic development, industrial development.
On city-owned property.
On any, well, yeah, yeah.
Basically.
So for example, if there was going to be commercial or industrial development out at the airport with the EDC, streamline that process at all?
Could.
It could because it allows the city to basically take its land that the city owns and turn it over to this corporation who could then develop it. The city could not directly because of public lands.
It allows the city to retain control.
To give it to somebody to develop it on behalf of the city.
But to go, but also.
That is primarily composed of elected.
But also cutting to the chase. The, the EDC, the idea was y'all bought the Bendelay property. We had some property on London Street. You have property on Washington where that siren is. There are these properties that the city owns that we don't really have a good idea of what we're going to do. So one of the thoughts was that the EDC board, which the city chaired, right? And three of the members of city council sit on, that they would be able to help the city determine how best you like utilize that land. But in practice, we had, you're absolutely correct. We have not been meeting. We don't have a sales tax. They're not very well-funded. There's not a very clear objective with that board, the EDC board.
Right.
And it.
And there's, and then went back and there were some people that we had to make some changes.
Yeah, there are some folks that are now.
Couldn't qualify for it.
That's right. If we're going to continue next year, we're going to have to reseat a, a couple of those positions because they, they no longer meet the qualifications. So that is a question that I intended to bring up with you all as councils. Do you want to consider, continue the EDC or not? I don't know what it'll take to unravel it, but I'm pretty sure it's paperwork, right? You have to unravel it with the state. And it's just a matter of.
You've actually sat on it.
Well, it's a corporation. It is, it is considered a corporation.
Right.
If they were keeping the council, if the council involved in any, they had any dealings to do with developers and any city property, I don't think the EDC involved in this council.
The EDC is just a recommending body on that. So they didn't make the decision without the coun, the council's always involved. Okay, well, you just made a statement that made it sound like you did.
The council still, the council still makes.
I don't have a strong opinion of it either way, but I was asking, because you've actually sat on it. What's your opinion?
They haven't gotten any real traction, but I think they were still adding the charter and all that stuff.
Right.
It, it wasn't. I, I don't see.
It's not, it's not a big, it's not a big loss if it goes away at this time.
Okay.
Okay, there's a consensus.
We need to form a future.
Yeah, so that, obviously the action will be taken in a council meeting subsequent to this, and I'll tell you what it takes to, to, to make that go away.
Absolutely.
So that's just this budget, this economic development budget, that was 11.
Well, it's 99.
$9,800, $9,900.
I guess on the other end, then let me just talk to the tourism. Do you want the city to take care of the tourism or do you want to contract with the chamber? It's your call.
I like having someone in.
Chamber can't be.
Huh?
I said, the problem is chamber has a lot of turnover.
Chamber has an open position right now because they don't have.
Well, and the problem is, you know, if you have to, in the past, years ago, they did get our hot funds and then they came back to us and said, we cannot meet the criteria.
Right.
They, and they had a good chamber back then, but then it went away. And they've not had a full, they've had a couple of good chamber folks that they've hired in, but then they.
And I'm not saying they wouldn't want to do it. I'm just saying, give them an opportunity if they wanted to.
They just don't have the, the staff.
More than happy to be with them. Be more than happy to talk to them about that. Let's just set that on aside for right now. Okay?
So we'll leave the commute tourism and business development budget untouched.
For right now. We haven't got our final, but for right now, let me talk to the chamber, see what their interest may be. No arm twist, you just see.
So just ahead of that.
Is there anything else?
Ahead of that discussion, I do think it's valuable to have someone who is responsible to the city government.
Yes, sir.
As a, a very direct form of input and who can do things independent of the chamber.
Yes, sir.
Because there are things about the city and about promoting it.
Right.
That do not directly benefit individual businesses or even don't directly touch on businesses at all.
Well, the chamber will tell you, they only do stuff for their members. So we have downtown businesses that are not members of the chamber. We encourage membership as a city, even though we don't gain benefit. We always encourage people to join the chamber. We think the chamber is a valuable organization to belong to. But that's a fact. Like they, their board discourages interactions with non-members because they're not dues-paying members. So that would be one issue that you might want to think about or consider.
And that's another issue that personally with people I know at the chamber, said chamber is not like it used to be. They don't help us. We want chamber to be more active. So anyway, the, the, the use of, the use of hot tax, for example, to the chamber, it, it, it can be done, but there must be a written contract laying out the duties of the chamber, and they must be reportable to that. So they could, it has to be completely spelled out. I'm not saying we're doing it. I'm just saying, let's just have that, let's have a conversation. Yep, yep. But any, anybody else have any thoughts or questions?
On general fund?
Pretty close to a general fund.
Yeah, so far what I've heard is I need to look at salaries for, most of the, where that's going to impact is, is going to be on the enterprise side.
And I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I'll, I'll look at that. We didn't talk about enterprise budget today, so we'll have an opportunity to revisit that. And then the detective. So I've got to figure out a way to pay the, for the 98.5. You just gave me 10. So I've just got to find 88.
We just, we just agreed to the use of 240 of reserve funds as needed.
250, 250.
250 for reserve funds as needed to fund the street maintenance.
Yeah, so that'll be in the budget and then whether or not it actually happens.
I can't wait till 10.1. I'd really like for you to start now. Sir.
I'd like a clarification.
Yeah, I got that. But that's not a.
So it's that we'll have to find money to pay the detective position.
Right.
Okay, I, I would, my understanding was we were funding the detective position within the amount of funds we have available within the general fund, not going in.
That's correct. So I've got to figure out how to do that because you had about.
Try to make it work.
Yeah, you have about 40 to 50,000 of that covered probably because you had some excess revenues already. So it's not a lot and I can find it. I'll, I'll figure that out. We'll, I'll rebalance the budget adding the detective in. And I'll make the chief fix me a steak.
I want to tell you all something.
Yes.
And this is just for me. On, no, no, on all the.
You have four minutes.
Positions.
Yes.
Mr. Leroy left off that I am certified.
I know you are. You have to be.
Well, I have to be cert, well.
We were looking at cert, paid certs, just seeing.
I've been re-certified four times, which is 20 years. I'm doing my final now, but I just want to put that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Deborah, I apologize.
Did you say you're doing your final certification?
Well, because it's five years, and I'm thinking about it because I don't know if I want to do it again. Because I've been doing this 26 years now.
Okay.
And so five years from now, maybe we'll have that talk, but yeah, it's fun.
So Deborah, the reason, and I apologize, the reason you were left off, not because you weren't certified, because not every single certification is on there. Absolutely, I agree with that. You and Bob both.
It's kind of like John, it's someday in the future.
We were quantifying paid cert positions and yours isn't paid, yours is based in, put the salary. That's why it wasn't there. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I think it was productive.
I'm fixing to lose the quorum, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. It is now, I'm going to say it, it's at 2:57 PM.